Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting into order. It is 6:01. If I can please have Rocco.
Councilmember Romero.
Present.
Mayor Protem Damayo.
Here.
Councilmember Peralta.
Present.
Councilmember Alonso.
Here.
Mayor Melendez.
And I am here. Okay, I'll turn it over to our city attorney for the announcement of the closed session items.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. On tonight's closed session agenda, the city council will recess in the closed session and consider the following. Item number one, conference with legal counsels to anticipate their litigation. This conversation is authorized under Government Code Section 549, 56.9, Subsection D, Subsection 2. There is one matter to discuss. Item number two, conference with labor negotiators. This conversation is authorized under Government Code Section 549, 57.6. The agency negotiator is Mr. Raul Alvarez. Labor groups is listed. That completes the closed session agenda.
Thank you, city attorney. At this time, it would be appropriate to go into closed session. It is 6:02. After a closed session, we'll reconvene to start the regular session.
Good evening everyone, we're back from a closed session.
And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our city attorney to provide a report on the closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all five members of the city council being present, the city council met in closed session and discussed item number one, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. There was one matter to discuss. City staff made a presentation. City council provided direction. No final reportable action was taken. Item number two, conference with labor negotiators. City staff made presentations. City council provided direction. There's no reportable action taken. That concludes my report out of closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. At this time, we'll move on to the invocation. That's going to be by Father Frederick Abiera. If you can please come up here, and if you can all please rise.
Lord God, in these trying times marked by fear and anxiety, we gather this afternoon in this city council meeting seeking your guidance and strength. Grant us the wisdom to always pursue peace, justice, and equality for all, regardless of race, religion, language, background, or status in life. Give us the courage to uphold human dignity and respect for every single person. May we offer comfort to those who live in fear and a sense of uncertainty. May we support one another with love, kindness, and compassion. Echoing the prayer of Saint Francis of Assisi, may we be instruments of God's peace. Where there is hatred, may we bring love. Where there is injury, may we bring forgiveness. Where there is despair, may we bring hope. Where there is fear, may we bring peace. May our decisions reflect our commitment to building a society where every person feels valued, respected, and at peace. May we strive to create a community where fear and uncertainty give way to love, compassion, and understanding. Bless our city of Montebello, our county of Los Angeles, our state of California, and our country. Bless its leaders. Bless our mayor and our council members and its people. Guide us with your wisdom and love. May our actions be guided by empathy, compassion, and a deep respect for human dignity. We ask this through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
If I can please have our city treasurer lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the good life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father, for the invocation. Also, thank you to our city treasurer for the pledge. We'll move on to corrections to the agenda.
Yes, Mayor, council members. We have two corrections to the agenda. Presentations, we will be tabling item number five, proclamation for Clara Derma Awareness Month to a future meeting. The actual agenda, we will also be tabling item number 22 to a future meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, city manager. Before we move on to the ceremonial portion of the agenda, I would like to move the staff communication on items of community interest. And I'd also like to use this opportunity to address all of you on some of the recent events that have been happening, both the city of L.A., Paramount, and our neighboring communities. And I'd also like to invite my colleagues to also say a few words. As your mayor, I believe it's my responsibility to begin this meeting by addressing the deeply troubling events that have unfolded over the past several days in the city of L.A., in Paramount, and throughout surrounding communities in L.A. County. Like many of you, I am the son of immigrant parents. I know the hopes, fears, and sacrifices that shape the immigrant experience. And so, it deeply pains me, it hurts me, to witness the recent immigration raids that have shaken our neighborhoods. These actions do not just tear apart families. They sow fear, trauma, and instability in communities that already face far too many challenges. I know this has been a frightening, exhausting, and frustrating time for many of you. You are not alone. I see you, I hear you, and I stand with you. And let me be clear, the safety, dignity, and protection of our Montebello community is and will always be our number one priority. We are a city built on diversity. We are a city made stronger by our differences. And we must never forget that our strength lies in our unity. We will continue to work closely with our local organizations, individually partnering up with our legal aid partners, advocacy groups, to ensure that our residents know their rights, have access to resources, and feel supported regardless of their immigration status. To those who are feeling uncertain or afraid, I want you to know that the city council and I are committed to doing everything within our power to protect our families, our neighbors, and the future we're all working so hard to build together. Let us continue to show compassion, let us continue to stand in solidarity, and let us continue to fight for a Montebello that is safe, inclusive, and just for all of us. I'd like to also pass the mic over to my colleagues to say if they want to say a few words. I'll start off with Mayor Protem Tama.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Montebello family. I also, as part of your council up here, I want to speak directly to the fear and uncertainty that many of you are feeling in light of the recent reports about the immigration raids in our surrounding communities. Montebello is built by immigrant hands. This goes back to the Simonds Brickyard. These are families who have poured their hearts into our neighborhoods, our schools, and our economy. You are not just residents, you are the very fabric of the city. And I want you to know that we see you, we value you, and we stand with you. I share your concern. I feel the weight of parents afraid to pick up their kids from school, of workers afraid to show up to their jobs, and neighbors checking over their shoulder in a place that they call home. While immigration enforcement is a federal matter, we also, as local leaders, have a responsibility to protect the dignity and safety of our residents, all of our residents, including our immigrant residents. I'm committed to working with my colleagues on this council to seek answers, demand transparency, and ensure that Montebello remains a place where families, regardless of status, can live without fear. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity in allowing us to address our community this evening. It's important to continue to highlight how the ICE raids in our region are not just alarming, they are unprecedented in scale, coordination, and cruelty. Never before have we seen such sweeping operations targeting our working families. We have checkpoints set up outside freeway entrances, detentions happening in front of children during graduations or while attending church, and entire communities are being gripped by fear. This is not immigration enforcement as usual. This is something more aggressive, more invasive, and deeply harmful to our communities. We are witnessing U.S. citizens, legal residents, and undocumented neighbors alike being harassed, questioned, and even detained without warning. Families are living in fear. Parents are unsure if it's safe to go to work or even take or pick up their children from school. This fear is real, and it's extremely heartbreaking to all of us. As someone who immigrated to this country and grew up undocumented here in Montebello, this community opened its arms for myself and my family, and this hits me deeply. I remember lying awake at night, wondering if my mom would make it home, the fear that crept in every time she was late from work, the fear of attending my immigration appointments and not knowing what would happen. This fear really defined my childhood, and now I see that same fear in the eyes of our youth, our elders, and our community. I also see courage. I see neighbors checking in on each other. I see people stepping up to offer help, and I see youth finding their voice in the face of injustice. To everyone listening, you have rights, and it's critical to know them. You have the right to remain silent. You have the right to an attorney. ICE cannot enter your home without a judicial warrant signed by a judge with your name on it. You do not have to open the door or answer questions, and you do not have to sign anything without talking to a lawyer. You have rights under the U.S. Constitution. Mi comunidad no están solos. Estamos con ustedes. Los vemos, los escuchamos, y vamos a seguir luchando juntos. En Montebello seguimos firmes, y aquí todos merecen vivir sin miedo. I do want to just extend an open invitation to our community members who might be feeling fear, anger, frustration, sadness. Next Wednesday at Boulevard Market, we will be hosting a healing and art session for our community where we will be providing opportunities for our youth, as well as adults, to join us in banner making, creating poems, reflection circles, painting and drawing in order to have a safe space to be able to express how we're feeling during this critical time. That will be next Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Boulevard Market, and hope you all can join us. Thank you.
Councilmember Alonso?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to say that I stand with the families that are being hurt right now. Across Los Angeles, ICE is carrying out raids with brutality and impunity. Schools, graduations, work sites, home improvement stores, they're going into our communities without warrants, without discretion, without care. Pregnant mothers have been taken, children battling cancer, U.S. citizen children ripped from treatment because their parents are undocumented. Union leaders, fathers, daughters, sons, families. And now the National Guard and Marines have been deployed in what amounts to a militarized occupation of our neighborhoods. Tear gas and rubber bullets are being used on civilians. That's not targeted enforcement. That's state violence. We were told that these actions would focus on criminals. But what we are seeing is indiscriminate. What we are seeing is fear used as policy. And what we are hearing quietly is that this is part of a broader plan. A plan to deport mixed-ethnic families under the guise of keeping them together. A plan that Tom Hume himself floated. Send U.S. citizens and children out of the country so they don't have to live without their undocumented parents. That's not policy. That is eugenics with a press release. So, no, I'm not going to stay quiet while people in my community are hunting in broad daylight. I will not normalize government agents tearing families apart, school drop-offs, hospital waiting rooms. That is not order. That is not security. That is cruelty with a badge. I stand with our undocumented neighbors. I stand with the street vendors, with the day laborers, with the caretakers, with every person being targeted, not because of what they've done, but because of who they are. Montebello will not participate in this silence. We demand an end to the raids. We demand dignity, and we demand that federal agencies return to lawful targeted practices if they even planned on following them to begin with. We are the United States of America. Liberty and justice were never meant for the few, the favored, or the familiar, not just for me and not worse for all of you out there, but for everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Montebello residents. I am compelled to address the injustices occurring in neighboring cities which have sparked concern, unanswered questions, and fear about potential ICE actions in our city. I want to assure you that we are fully committed to protecting our residents, and we will not collaborate with ICE. Consequently, we are not informed about any planned raids or staging. We will remain vigilant and notify our residents immediately if we detect any suspicious activity. I urge you to prioritize your safety, understand your rights, carry proper identification and documentation of any violations of your basic rights. We must unite and advocate for what is right. The individuals being taken into custody are not merely criminals. They are our grandparents, our cousins, longtime neighbors, and fellow community members. Veterans who have proudly served our country are being deported. And it is our responsibility to speak out against this injustice. As a parent, I had to advise my son to avoid visiting the skate park this week due to the color of his skin and racial profiling. I want to reiterate that our city does not support ICE, and we will not cooperate with them. They are not welcome in our community. We must come together, support one another, and demonstrate our strength and resilience and face adversity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Turn it over to our city manager.
Yes, Mayor, council members. If I may, I also want to echo, support everything that was said. As an immigrant to this country, as a son of immigrants, my family originally settled here in Montebello as a safe haven. And now that sense of community has been shaken, not only for us, other communities that are being directly impacted by these ICE raids that are occurring. As the administrator now, I want to say that I want to be a part of running a city where we continue to let our residents feel safe. I want to reaffirm what council has mentioned, which is our position as a city, which is what we do, our policy. We don't cooperate with ICE raids. We are here for every member of our community. We encourage you to continue to work with us, to call us for anything you may need. We are here to provide resources. We do not question anybody's legitimacy or legality in the city. That has nothing to do with our city business. So, I just want to ensure that everybody's aware of that, that you do not hesitate to contact our city at any level because we're here to support you, provide municipal services, without any concern whether you have legal status in our city or not. I also want to allow our chief of police to speak specifically in terms of what the position is of our police department. Chief Lopez, do you mind saying a few words?
Thank you, city manager, mayor, and council, and community. So, just so you know where the police department stands, we're in alignment with Senate Bill 54, which is a California Values Act. And the Montebello Police Department and our officers do not enforce federal immigration laws. Senate Bill 54 restricts local and state law enforcement agencies from using their personnel or resources to carry out immigration enforcement. So, the Montebello Police Department, how we deal with immigration is our officers do not question individuals about immigration status. We do not hold individuals on ICE detainers. We do not participate in federal immigration enforcement operations. And we do not transfer individuals to immigration authorities except in extremely limited situations where it's required by law and where they have valid warrants. Immigration enforcement is not the responsibility of the local police department, but it's a federal responsibility. Our priority is public safety, and that means that all of our residents are ensured that regardless of their background, regardless of their status, they feel that contacting the police for help is not going to get them in any danger with immigration. If someone's a victim of a crime, if you're a witness of a crime, or you need any kind of police assistance, please call the police department. Your immigration status will never be questioned. There's no fear of contacting us. The officers are there to help you. The safety and trust of our community is our highest priority. And it's important that the community understands that since 1992, that I can think back to when I first started my career here, our policy has been the same. And when Senate Bill 54 changed, our policy was always in alignment with it. So, it's important that the community understands that we're not going to be out there doing any kind of immigration enforcement, and they should feel safe to call us and feel safe to call us for help questions or anything that they need and not be in fear that their immigration status would ever, ever be contacted or be requested from them.
Thank you, Chief. As we try to have some type of sense of normalcy in our city, I want to mention a very important event that's going to be starting next week, June 18th, after five years of not having these... uh, these events, we're gonna, uh, we're bringing back our concerts at the park, at Montebello City Park. Uh, starting next Wednesday, June eighteenth, uh, from six thirty to nine P.M., we're gonna have the, our local historic band, The Wise Guys. Uh, they'll be performing, so we want to encourage everybody to join us. Bring your blankets, bring, uh, uh, your chairs to join us. We're gonna have food trucks, a certified farmer's market, uh, local vendors, handcrafted goods. Um, it's a very big deal for us as a city. Again, we haven't had this, uh, this event in over five years, so uh, hopefully you can join us next week on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we'll continue with the presentation portion of the agenda. And, uh, for the, for the next item, we'd like to celebrate LGBTQ plus Pride Month. This June, we are once again proud to honor, support, and recognize LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Pride Month was first celebrated in October nineteen ninety-four. It was founded by Missouri High School history teacher named Rodney Wilson. Wilson, who was the first openly gay public school teacher in Missouri, originated the idea, served as a founder on the first coronating committee, and chose uh, October as this month of this recognition. Today, it is nationally observed throughout the month of June. Pride Month is also a civil rights statement representing the contributions and sacrifices of the LGBTQ community. Throughout this month, the city's pride banner is once again displayed at City Hall to show our solidarity and support for the LGBTQ plus community as a public reminder to practice love and embrace diversity. Juneteenth. We also recognize the more recent historical acknowledgement of Juneteenth, an annual remembrance that commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. The actual date, June nineteenth, marks the day when federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas in eighteen sixty-five to take control of the state and ensure all enslaved people be freed. Juneteenth is a day for historic reflection, rejoicing, and educating one another about the significance and meaning of this day in order to make lasting improvements that enhance and build equality in our society. Juneteenth also celebrates the strength of the American spirit, recognizing wrongs and setting about to make things right. In the same spirit, we as Americans strive to advance the leveling, the level, leveling playing fields and achieve ever greater social equality. To learn more about the significance of this holiday, we encourage our residents to visit juneteenth.com. Uh, we are pushing, uh, the proclamation for Scloderm Awareness Month. So we'll move on to item number six, Fiscal Year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Proposed Capital Improvement Program. And we have a presentation by our Public Works Director.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Potem, City Councilmember, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and staff, and our residents, uh, listening at home and also in front of our city council meeting today. This is our Fiscal Year twenty-five, twenty-six Proposed Capital Projects List. So our first slide here, we talk about the completed projects during our Fiscal Year twenty-four, twenty-five, which starts in July first to June thirtieth. Um, we had received a grant from the State of California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, uh, CP eight-five-one, in which we, uh, upgraded three traffic signals. Uh, one at Garfield and New Whittier, Garfield Avenue in Viacompo, and Viacompo in Finley. Uh, another one that we finished this year was CP eight-nine-four-dash-three, which was the Phase Three of the golf course renovation. Uh, CP nine-one-three, which is our Fiscal Year twenty-three, twenty-four SB One Annual Year, and Street Improvement Project was also completed this, this year. Uh, CP nine-one-eight, which was the Belaverte Drive pavement rehabilitation project taking place at the golf course. CP nine-two-four, which is the Rio Hondo Axis Improvement Project, which is the landscape portion of the project was also completed in this fiscal year. And we also went ahead and finished, uh, City Park Baseball Field Renovations, which was CP nine-two-eight. Uh, we also had, uh, minor enhancements at the pool at George Hansel Aquatic Center. Uh, so this, this is our first project, uh, that we've had presentations previously in the past. Um, and which is CP eight-eight-four, which is our bluff road fence replacement project. Uh, we're looking to improve, uh, and put in a fence, starting on Sycamore and working our way north towards Mines Avenue. Um, the fence is right next to the Rio Hondo Channel Coastal Spreading Grounds. Uh, we are looking at the funding source of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the State Department of Parks and Recreation. Uh, we're looking for an additional three hundred thousand dollars from our annual gas tax allocation. Um, we are looking to take this to City Council on June twenty-fifth. City Council meeting for bids. And tentative commencement date would be September twenty twenty-five. And we're looking to complete this project by January twenty twenty-six and effectively closing this project down in February of twenty twenty-six. Our next project would be, um, Beverly Boulevard Paving the Way, CP eight-eight-seven. Uh, this is a segment of Beverly Boulevard that has not been paved over the last several years. Uh, so we're currently looking at completing the design for these two segments of Beverly Boulevard, which are between the West City Limits and Garfield Avenue and a segment between Walcox Avenue and Viavall Berde. Uh, the design is tentatively scheduled to start December of twenty twenty-five. And we're looking to finish the design by June twenty twenty-six. Uh, the Montebello Boulevard Paving the Way Project is currently on its way. Uh, we had our first pre-construction meeting this morning. Uh, more details will come as we start moving with the contractor. Uh, and this is a segment of Montebello Boulevard between Lincoln Avenue and Los Angeles Avenue. Uh, we're looking to resurface the street, but also add ADA enhancements and center median island that are going to be landscaped. Uh, the contract was awarded on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And our, uh, substantial completion date is January of twenty twenty-six. Uh, and we're looking to close out this project in February of twenty twenty-six. Our next project is CP eight-eight-nine, which is Whittier Boulevard Paving the Way Project. Uh, and this is throughout the Whittier corridor here in the city of Montebello. Uh, we're looking to do asphalt concrete pavement resurfacing and ADA enhancements. Uh, we're looking also to complete this, um, project on the design side. Uh, we're tentatively looking to continue and start, restart this project on August of twenty twenty-five and looking to complete it by December of twenty twenty-five. Uh, CP nine oh one is a bluff road slope stabilization. So staff has been working with the County Flood Control District to ensure that we stabilize that, that, uh, slope there, uh, Bluff and Beach Boulevard. Uh, so what we're looking to do is do an alternative design to take the water on Fourth Street between Beach Street and Mines and connect to an LA County Storm Rain. Uh, we have started the design on June twenty twenty-five. We're currently working with the County Flood Control uh, to obtain a permit, uh, and approval to connect to the county storm drain. Uh, we're looking to, uh, complete the design by January twenty-two and six. And we're hoping to receive that permit, uh, in order to go to the next phase of construction by June of twenty twenty-six. Uh, CP nine oh five Olympic Boulevard Complete Street Study. Uh, so once again, this is the whole Olympic Boulevard corridor. Uh, we're looking to, uh, do a complete streets, features, paving, street lighting, sewer and storm rain facilities are going to be upgraded. Uh, this project was awarded on, on June twelfth of twenty twenty-five. Sorry, twenty twenty-four. And, uh, we're looking to complete the design, um, by December of twenty twenty-five. Uh, the goal here is that, uh, once we have the plan specs and um, engineer's estimate, that we'd come back to City Council with a request to seek, uh, bids. Also hoping that this project will allow us to go after federal and state funds as this project will be innovative in the way it's designed. Uh, CP nine-one-seven Plaza Drive Payment Rehabilitation Project was also awarded by the City Council. Uh, this is a segment of Plaza Drive between San Gabriel Boulevard and Montebello Boulevard next to the mall. Uh, we will start this project in the next three weeks or so. Uh, All American Asphalt was the contractor that was awarded, uh, the contract. Uh, we're looking to complete this project by November of twenty twenty-five. CP nine-one-nine is a downtown sewer replacement project, which is the segment of Whittier Boulevard between Montebello Boulevard and the, and the West City Limits. We're also looking to enhance the sewers just north and south of Whittier Boulevard along the alleys. Existing sewers are concrete sewers, and we're looking to put in, uh, plastic pipe that will be extremely durable. And, uh, it will be, uh, a material that will last a long, long time. Uh, we're looking to tentatively commence this construction in September of twenty twenty-five and looking to have to complete this project by February of twenty twenty-six with ultimate closeout in March of twenty twenty-six. Uh, CP ninety-three is our fire station number fifty-six Roof Replacement Project. We're also gonna include an HVAC uh, replacement on this project. And this is a fire station at one-one-six-six-six South Greenwood Avenue. Uh, we will be seeking City Council approval at the next council meeting to solicit bids. Uh, we're looking to start construction in August of twenty twenty-five and ultimately looking to complete this project by January of twenty twenty-six. Uh, CP nine-two-four-dash-two, which is the second phase of the Rio Hondo Axis Improvement Project, uh, which is located on the southwest corner of Beverly and Ray Drive, next to, uh, Grant Ray Park. Uh, we're looking to put in and fabricate and install an electric digital message sign. Uh, where's, we will be seeking authorization from council at the next council meeting. Um, hoping that we will be finished substantially by May of twenty twenty-six with this project. Uh, it's taken us a while because we've been working with Southern California Edison uh, to, um, draw power from a utility particle that's located on the north side of the street. Uh, CP nine-two-five, which is our senior center basement remodel. Uh, this project is currently out to bid. Uh, and this is focusing on the basement portion of the project of the, uh, facility. So we're looking to improve lighting, flooring, restrooms, adding a fitness area and a computer room for our seniors. Uh, we will be, uh, coming back to City Council toward this project in August of twenty twenty-five. And we're looking to substantially complete this project by March of twenty twenty-six. Uh, CP nine-two-six, which is our traffic signal Whittier Boulevard at Sixth Street. Uh, this is a project that's been in the works for quite a few years now. Uh, we're nearing completion of the design. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts to it, especially the decorative crosswalk, which was uh, unanimously chosen by our community, uh, which is, uh, art and public faces, uh, which is a nice feature for our downtown. Uh, we are looking to, uh, commence construction in October of twenty twenty-five and, uh, substantially have this project completed by May of twenty twenty-six. Uh, CP nine-three-zero, which is a SCAG grant that we received in conjunction with our Community Development Department. Uh, the funding was three hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. Uh, it's mostly going to be driven by SCAG. They'll coordinate the efforts on communicating, uh, an outreach to the community. Uh, they're gonna be helping us design the project, and then once it's ready to go, we will put it out to bid. Uh, so we're, uh, scheduling, waiting for them to, uh, process the agreement, which is closer to December of this year. And once thereafter, we will start with, uh, completing the design and constructing this in twenty twenty-six. Uh, but we'll be taking this all the way to March of twenty twenty-seven as funds become available to SCAG. Our CP nine-three-one, which is our citywide catch basin CPS and ARS units installation project. Um, this is a project that we've been working with, uh, with the EPA and the Regional Board over the last five to six years. Uh, we are looking to completely renovate all our LA County-owned and maintained catch basins uh, because it's a federal requirement and a state requirement for us to ensure that trash does not go into our waterways. And so, uh, we're looking to complete the first phase by October of this year uh, to put in the CPS units similar to what's on the pictures. And then, um, any catch bases that need retrofitting, uh, we're looking to complete that by twenty twenty-seven. Uh, CP nine-three-two is a transit remodel. Uh, we are currently going through the process, uh, through our Transit Department. And there's a lot of ADA enhancements, office space improvements. Um, we are looking to hopefully get our project going in after the new fiscal year. Uh, and we're looking to substantially complete this project by July, August of twenty twenty-six. Uh, CP nine-three-three, which is an LED sign at City Hall. Uh, we're also looking to upgrade, uh, this right in front of, um, uh, off of Beverly there. Uh, the design is almost completed. Uh, we're looking to start to solicit bids in October of twenty twenty-five and award the construction, the construction contract by December of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're looking to commence this project in February of twenty-six and have this substantially completed by July of twenty-six. Uh, CP nine-three-four, which is our metroactive transportation cycle one project. Uh, this is a project that is led, uh, by the city of Monterey Park. Um, the county, ourselves, and the city of Rosemead are, uh, active participants. Um, there is no funding technically that's coming out of this. Um, we've just looking to set aside funding just for potential incidentals, but a lot of the work is gonna take place on, uh, city of Monterey side, city of Rosemead County, and then a majority of the streets are actually gonna take place here, uh, in front of the cemetery. Um, they are actively looking to start the construction in September of twenty twenty-five and then have to complete this project by the end of June of twenty twenty-six. Uh, CP nine-three-six, which is our charge-ready project. Uh, this is a project that was spearheaded originally through the Parks Department. Um, it's thirty-four electric vehicle ports that are going to be added right here at City Hall. Uh, it's a collaborative nature between the Gateway City Cog, um, between Southern California Edison and the vendor that's going to be supplying the charging stations. Um, this project's at no cost to the city. Uh, the only thing is that we're allowing them to utilize our space, uh, in the parking lot for this project. So ultimately, this project has to be completed by June of twenty twenty-six. Uh, between January and twenty, January twenty-six and June of twenty-six, uh, there's gonna be, uh, metrics taken to see usage and see if this is a viable project that could take place in other city facilities. Uh, CP nine-three-seven Concourse Roundabout. Uh, so actually, the roundabout is, has been installed. Our Public Works Department went ahead and did this. If you're not familiar with this area, it's a five-legged intersection on Concourse Madison and Viavall Berde. Uh, the police department has also helped us out with ensuring that motorists understand what the process is to go around. And, uh, we will be monitoring, uh, this area to ensure that it's, uh, built correctly and that we don't have any incidentals. Um, in essence, you can see from some of the pictures that, uh, there's a lot of donations taking place, and a lot of the residents in that area are very thankful. taking place and a lot of the residents in that area are very thankful that we went ahead and modified this five-legged intersection. CP937 Various Striping Enhancements. It's a continuation of that project too. We're looking to take this to the community and these, this area is affected by Wilbur Place, Beverly Terrace and Bradley Avenue, which are just south of Beverly on the East Valley side of the city. We're looking to upgrade and enhance ADA curb ramps and do some striping in order to increase parking in this area. We're hoping that the coordination effort takes place in the next month and a half or so and that the residents within the community are happy with the design. We've obviously have asked the police department and the fire department for their, for their input and we're hoping that this receives positive notes from the community in order for us to restripe this area. CP938, which is fiscal year 2425 SP1 Streets Construction Project. We're looking to take this to city council August of 2025. We're looking to award the contract in September of 25 and start construction in October 25 and ultimately complete this project by March of 2026. CP939, which is our American with Disabilities Act enhancements. The city receives a lot of calls from residents regarding tripping falls or anything like that, so we're doing our part in order to mitigate and minimize the number of uplifted sidewalks throughout the city. A more well-defined map with the areas will be provided. So we're looking to advertise this project in September of 2025 and ultimately close this out in April of 2026. CP940, which is our Lincoln Avenue Infrastructure Enhancement Project. We're looking at potentially the segment of Avenida that I mentioned to San Gabriel Boulevard. Unfortunately, that area does not have any water fire hydrants, so in the case of potential fire in the future, we're trying to seek about mitigating that. Those concerns, been working in coordination with the fire chief. He brought this to my attention. There's other issues regarding that segment whenever it rains, some of the dirt from the whole side of the road. So we're trying to treat this as a complete streets as well, trying to improve and enhance that area so that it beautifies it as well. And so we're looking to finish this feasibility study by December of 2025. CP941 is the sidewalk improvements. So this one focuses on the existing sidewalks that cannot be treated through some sort of grinding and this requires removal and replacement. Again, we're looking to mitigate a lot of the sidewalks that are uplifted by trees and things like that. So we're looking to take this to, cause hopefully city council in September, start with the construction December of 2025 and ultimately finish this out in May of 2026. CP942 is Wilcox Avenue Traffic Striping Improvements. This is at the request of our Traffic and Safety Commission. There's been a lot of residents that also complain about this segment from Lincoln to Viacompo. It's making sure that some of the striping allows for safe traverse through the city north-south as there's also a high school in between the two streets. So we're looking to finish the design by November of 2025 and ultimately take this to city council to bid it in January of 2026 with substantial completion in July of 2026. CP943, which is our First Life Smile Traffic Signal Improvement Projects. It involves three intersections, which is Montebello at Whittier, Garfield at Whittier and Maple at Beverly. This was also part of the Transit Department's award that happened last year. And so we're also finishing up the design in October of 2025. We would probably start to seek city council authorization in December of 2025 and ultimately complete this project by 2026. CP944, fiscal year 2526. These are the streets that are going to be recommended for resurfacing in upcoming fiscal year. And this will also be something that we're going to start to, see if we can start construction in later on this year and then closing out this in July of 2026. CP945 is the Holyfield Community Garden Project. This is again funding that's coming through our Parks and Recreation Department. We are looking to complete the design by September of 25, soliciting bids in October of 2025 and we are looking to substantially compete this by April of 26, if not earlier. This is our Community Resources Center at Chat Holyfield Park. We're looking to start work in-house as soon as we receive the funds for this project and city council blesses it. We have been coordinating internally between Public Works, our police department and our Parks Department and we're ensuring that this will be a really good location for, to have presence down south. We're looking to finish this project by before probably, what do you think? By August of 2026. I'm not sure who wrote this presentation, it's too long. I would like to blame myself, but geez. We're almost finished. Well, at least my voice is so. Traffic Signal at Wilcox Avenue and Via Pecel. We're looking to fund the design of this intersection, T-intersection. In the, in the past, we've had complaints that it's a difficult intersection to cross, so we're looking at completing this. This coordination with Southern California Edison needs to take place as well to provide power. So we'll be probably bidding out this construction project in 26, 27. And here's just a couple of other projects that are unfunded. There's nothing that has actually been called out, but they are necessities throughout the city. So we'll just keep our fingers crossed and hoping that Michael will release some funds to make reparations. And with that, it concludes my long presentation. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about little, little things that we need to repair. Thank you.
Thank you for the... Wow, you got a, you got a standing ovation. You have a lot of work, Mr. Public Works. Thank you again for the presentation. I'll look to see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments. Councilor Peralta?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I do wanna just commend you, Director Roldan. I will say for all my time on council, I think this is one of the first times we just get such a comprehensive update when it comes to the capital improvement projects that we're set to accomplish within this upcoming year. I even tried to go back to the website and see, you know, what, what we had covered previously. And I, and I know for, for a good time, I think there's a lot of frustration, not only among council, but our community in terms of feeling like there was a pause in terms of major projects within the city. One recommendation I do have is if this can be uploaded to the city website to make this accessible to, to our community, but where do I get started? There are so many, I think, very exciting projects that are coming to Montebello in this upcoming fiscal year. For someone that has continuously advocated for traffic and safety to see projects that not only repave our streets, our arterial corridors, traffic signals, roundabouts, pedestrian trails, intersect, three intersection redesigns, as well as the, I know the, the downtown new scramble crosswalk with signal light and artwork. I mean, these are all really, really important projects that we've been advocating on behalf of our community. And so I'm very excited to, to really see these through. I mean, you know, things such as our fire station roof replacement in South Montebello. I know our fire station in South Montebello needs some care and love there and so very excited to see this coming through to ensure that our first responders there, you know, have a home that they feel proud of and that they feel safe in. Going down on some projects in terms of, I know Lincoln Avenue, and I know this is in, in council member Georgina's district, that area on Lincoln Avenue is obviously a fire hazard area. It's a dumping ground for, for Montebello to be able to enhance that area through ensuring that we have actual fire hydrants there in case there was an emergency and that a fire had to be put out there, but also the camera system that was highlighted and then the overall enhancement and beauty to the area that specific area leads into the riverbed where we have folks from different cities coming through, whether it's through biking or jogging. And so being able to enhance these important access points are extremely important. And so a lot of great projects, I'm sure my colleagues here will touch on some that are important for their districts as well, but overall, just really commend you and your team. I know there's a lot of work that is, that you all will be responsible for in the upcoming year. Just one area of priority, as always, is ensuring that there's consistent public outreach when it comes to any impacts that might be within the general areas of our, of where our residents reside. And then also outreach in terms of potentially including community feedback within some of these major feasibility studies that were, that are going to be taking place. But with that, I just wanna thank you and just really request if this could be added to the city's website as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has any other comments, questions? Councilor Romero?
Yes, as Scott said, thank you for all that information. I'm really excited about all the changes to come in Montebello. And as she said, to reiterate, I think it would be great for the residents to be able to have access to all these improvements in our city because there's constantly the question, what's happening in our city? What about this? What about this? And if they're just able to go to our website and to be able to check out all the things that are being done in our city, especially for the residents who aren't able to attend our council meetings. I know it's not easy for, for them to get to the meetings, especially if you have children or you're elderly. So that would be great for them to be able to have access to that. I'm particularly excited about the senior center. It's been long overdue and definitely needs, so I'm excited to see that happen and for all residents, not just District Four, to be able to use the facilities at the senior center. And also, I'm particularly excited about the road improvements throughout our city, not just a particular side of the city. We each were able to participate that and choose the streets. I personally drove down each of the streets that I chose and it's a tough decision because a lot of our streets need improvement and we could only do so money, right? And although we would love to do, my street needs improvement as well and it wasn't on the list. So it's a tough decision, but we're gonna try to get to each of the streets. It just takes time and hopefully our residents can understand that and be patient. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Any questions, comments?
I, I would like to add, so as, as we could see, this covers capital improvements of streets, open space, parks, major corridors, infrastructure, community spaces and sidewalks. So it's important to, to address, for example, like our infrastructure, which is not something we usually see and it's not, it, but it does impact us. So, you know, I was happy to see that on the list. And it's great also to see that a lot of the money, if you noticed, a lot of the money doesn't involve general funds. It's all accessing other types of monies. So that's investment in our community that is not general fund money. And the third thing I just wanted to point out that it's great that it has dates that are tied to these specific improvements so that we can gauge and see what's happening in our community. So thank you. Thank you for this comprehensive list.
Okay. Councilor Alonso?
Yeah, yeah. First and foremost, Director Roldan, the representative of District Number Five in South Montebello, I say thank you on behalf of all of us down there because there are five projects here that directly improve our part of the city. Now, I'm saying the other parts of the city are not important, but, you know, we definitely needed a little love down there. And I'll start with project CP884, which is the bluff road fence replacement project. In my five short months here, we've gone from, you know, I think we just had a meeting about this not too long ago and now we're at the stage where it's gonna come to fruition. So thank you so much for that. CP923, the fire station, obviously also in the south. That's great to hear that our fire station is being taken care of. CP944, street improvement project. Yes, all our city requires our streets to be improved, but date sprues, oak wood, carav, greenwood, some of the most frequented traffic streets in the south and perhaps some of the ones that need the most love. So I appreciate those streets being on that list. We're really happy about that. CP945, of course, Holyfield Community Garden coming September 2025. Incredible. So I wanna commend you for that and for putting that project forth. If you're not familiar with that project, that's gonna be right at Chat Holyfield Park to the east against, yeah, towards the east side of the park. I'm looking forward to the opening of that later this year, hopefully September 25, right? And lastly, another one that's huge for our community. And again, we've only been doing this collaborating for five months, a police community resource center. Now, I know that you said a lot and I only have one question for you. Where exactly is this going to be located?
Councilmember, that will be located at the community center at Chat Holyfield Park next to the county library.
Thank you so much, Director Roldan. So once again, thank you so much for all the efforts in putting these projects together that directly, again, impact and improve the status of District Number Five in Montevideo.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Just one last question. For the CP936, the 34 EV ports at City Hall, are those gonna be open for the community to be able to charge their vehicles or is that for personnel?
No, sir. That will be actually for the community.
Perfect.
And then I think, unless David wants to talk about it more, they're allowing us the opportunity, if you have a city vehicle that needs electrification, to utilize it as well.
And, and just as a follow-up on those, are those like, is there gonna be a charge for that or is it gonna be, how's that gonna work?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Roldan, for teeing this up and doing all the actual work. Like you mentioned, Parks and Rec just did the application, took a couple of years. We're taking the funding from SoCal Edison for the infrastructure and then working with our partners at LA County to pay for the chargers themselves. So we'll be working with Blink is our plan because we'll be providing the chargers through Blink is one of the top providers of charging. So part of that agreement is that they get to charge folks for use at the market rate, which is a couple cents per kilowatt. And then like Director Roldan mentioned, have access for the city vehicles to charge for free. So it's a way that the city doesn't have to pay for the electricity costs. So this is a totally free project, is the intention, but allow the public to pay for those fees directly to Blink.
Awesome. That's great to hear. Thank you again for the presentation and for answering several of our questions. Appreciate it. We'll move on to item number seven, Parks Division Presentation by the Montebello Police
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, staff and community. I'm excited to talk about our Park Services Bureau that is something that's gonna be very beneficial to the community to provide safety and to provide presence at all of our parks for everybody that plays and, and goes out to open spaces. So back in July of 2024, our city council provided the police department with funding for the implementation of this program. The goal of the program was to provide a... The goal of the program was to provide a safe environment within all of our city parks and the surrounding areas. The unit will, will take the place of the park rangers that were in Montebello for many years under the direction of Parks and Recreation. They did a great job when they were here. The vision of this unit is going to be for the opportunity for the police department to implement a new unit and then grow the size of our sworn personnel, our professional personnel, and also utilize all the resources of the police department to enhance park safety. The Parks Services Bureau will monitor all parks, all bus benches around parks and surrounding areas around the parks, streets near parks for incidents of vandalism, criminal activity, disruptive behavior and misuse of park properties. Our assigned personnel will engage park visitors to further our department's community relations efforts. And the goal is to make all of our parks a safe haven for children and adults to enjoy outdoor activities. The goals of the program will be safety, which is a reduction of crime and the enhancement of safety at all of our parks. It's ensuring safety of park visitors by enforcing local ordinance, the California Vehicle Code and the California Penal Code as appropriate. We're going to engage with visitors and create an environment where we can help the community enjoy the parks and appreciate parks, park services, park programs and all of the things that our Parks and Rec Department does to provide services for the community so that the community feels safe in going there. And then the most important one for us is going to be collaborating with Parks and Recreation, with our transit department to enhance the overall experience of not only being at the parks, but also getting to the parks and having the ability for residents that may not have vehicles to drive to a park to be safe getting there, be safe waiting for the bus to get back to their residence. This division is going to include a police lieutenant who's going to be the coordinator of the program. It's going to include a police sergeant who's going to be a supervisor. It's going to include two sworn police officers that will be responsible for the seven full-time and part-time community service officers and police cadets that will make up the core of our Parks Services Bureau. I'm happy to report that since we started creating policy procedure for this program back in February, all of our cadets and community service officers that were not hired at the time have been hired and all of them have received training in medical emergencies, missing persons, fires, identifying and reporting criminal activity, basic park operation procedures, de-escalation procedures, providing resources for persons with mental health issues and those who are unhoused, traffic enforcement, parking enforcement and crowd control. So it was important to, to me and to our staff to make sure that rather than rolling the unit out and train them as we went, that everybody received training. We also sent our police cadets and our community service officers to a, a training course that's required for them to write parking citations. The goal of this unit isn't to go out and write parking citations at parks, but there is time that is required and rather than have to wait for a police officer to go write a parking citation, our police cadets and our police community service officers will be able to do that. We're going to deploy a seven day a week schedule. We've worked with Director Sisnawski on identifying what hours, what days and what times are we're going to be most needed. So before we built out a schedule, it was important for me to collaborate with, with Mr. Sisnawski and really identify what we needed. What we determined was that there's a, a need for seven day a week coverage. So that's what we're going to deploy. We'll have our police cadets and our community service officers will be out there seven days a week as well. And as the line says, we're determining the hours and then once we, we get going with the program and we're out there full-time, we may make adjustments, but the hours will include morning and they will include evening. So we'll be out there throughout the day. The benefit of the police department taking over park safety is that we can leverage all of our resources. So we can have our patrol officers out there, our traffic bureau detectives, our special problems unit, we can use our bike unit, we can use our drones and we can have our community relations unit out at the park. And the approach with park safety is going to be really a three-pronged approach. It's going to be having our officers and the community service officers and cadets at the parks, walking around, talking to the community and building those relationships that we're very fortunate to have in this community that we're very supported by our community, by our council, by our leadership. But we want to continue to, to build those relationships and, and pay back the goodwill that we get from the community. We also have, our fire department has a very robust unit that can provide services to the unhoused, persons that have mental health issues. We also have a, a unit in our department that does the same thing. And so we're going to take that approach as well with people at the parks that may need services, they may need help to get them to maybe not want to live at the park or stay at the park and not use park resources as much. And then the third approach will be if we have criminal activity that's not allowing the community to enjoy the parks, we have a very robust police department units that can go out there and aggressively enforce the law when appropriate, but we always do so with transparency and we do that with inclusion for everyone. So you can be aggressive in, in enforcing laws and taking care of the community, but it can be done the right way and that's the way that your department does it. What's important for me to, to point out to the community is that this will not take away from resources that you're already getting in the city. This is going to enhance services. So it's important for me that, that everybody understands that by building this unit, we're not going to take police officers away that would handle your area. In fact, it's going to enhance if you live anywhere near or close to a park. We're going to, now that the program's going, we're going to undergo an annual review that I'll do with my command staff. We'll assess the effectiveness of what we're doing, the hours, the deployment and determine if we need more resources, more personnel, and we'll make adjustments as necessary. This past Memorial Day, we, we deployed, if you will, a soft opening of our Parks Services Bureau. We deployed at Grant Ray Park and other parks throughout the, the city because we knew it would be a busy time at all of our parks. We were able to have our police cadets out there, our CSOs out there, we had police officers out there, we had bike patrol out there. And it was great for us just to be at, at the park. At first, the community, it seemed like people didn't understand why we were out there if there was a problem. And that's exactly what I want to break in the parks. Just because we see police officers in the park, it doesn't mean there's a problem. So we want to change that culture where it's just, and it's a good thing for us to be out there and they should come up and talk to us when they can. Our personnel was out there, we were in cars, we were in bikes, we were on foot. It was very, very successful. Through that, we modified some of our policies, we modified some of our deployment, some of our strategies, some of our training, and that was the reason we went out in, on Memorial Day just to see what we needed to, to change. Full implementation of this program will be on or before July first. And once it gets rolled out there, it'll be, like I said, a full seven days a week, coverage in the morning, coverage in the evening. And our ultimate goal is to leverage all of the resources of the police department and some of our partners in the southeast area to make our parks safe and to provide a presence. And that presence is often a deterrent to criminal activity. We're excited to get this program off the ground. We're thankful for the, the support of council, the city manager and city staff. And it's going to be a great thing for the city and we look forward to seeing you at the parks. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you for the presentation, Chief. I'll look around to see if any of my colleagues have any questions, comments. Councilmember Peralta?
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I do have a question. So I understand that there'll, there'll be a CSO officers, community service officers as well as cadets, which I think it's an incredible pathway that you're creating there in terms of getting our cadets actively involved within our community. Many of them do end up becoming officers within our department. So I appreciate that aspect of the program. Will they be wearing a different uniforms? I know that oftentimes, I think that as we try to create more trust within our community, sometimes the, you know, the uniforms that are, that are worn could, could at times, I think, be a little bit intimidating to certain children or parents. Will they be wearing different types of clothing in terms of the specific program and the personnel, the CSO officers and the cadets?
Thank you for the question, ma'am. A great question. So yes, our police officers will wear the standard uniform that I'm wearing right now. Our police cadets and community service officers, the cadets will wear the uniform, but it's a light blue shirt. So it's very distinctive that they're not police officers. Our community service officers will be wearing polos, gray polos that specifically on the back of them say community service officers. So we did want to make that separation so that it's a, a softer approach, as you will, and people are unass intimidated to come up. They'll work in conjunction with our police officers so we can bridge that gap. And, and yes, thank you for the comment on, on the pathway. It's an excellent pathway. I started my career as a police cadet in nineteen ninety-two. Most of our command staff were police cadets or CSOs. So it's a great way for us to grab kids when they're done with the Explorer Program and they, they have an interest in law enforcement, so it builds the pathway. But the, the uniforms will be different between the officers, the police cadets and the CSOs.
Thank you for your response. And I also do appreciate the fact that you were very intentional in terms of the training that was provided from not only, you know, being able to recognize a criminal activity, putting out fires, also the de-escalation, I think is something extremely important and the mental health assistance aspect and incorporating the Montebello Community Assistance Program through our fire department in terms of providing on-the-ground services for folks that might be having any type of mental health, substance abuse or experiencing homelessness. And so that integration and that collaboration among our fire department and our police department is very key in terms of the relations with our, with our community and certain parts or certain populations. Beyond that, I do just want to commend you for your work on this. This was something that was approved about a year ago and at the start of, of your appointment, which I think it was like three, maybe three months now, three, four months, you actually took the initiative to now launch this program. And so I want to uplift not only yourself, but your department in terms of being able to bring safety, bring, able to create an environment in our parks where our residents or families can enjoy. I will say, and I, I always say that one of the biggest issues that I get oftentimes through text messages or calls is vandalism at our parks. I think I, I can confidently say that there was one week at a Shea Park where on Monday someone went in and destroyed the, the sinks where you wash your hands. On Wednesday, they went up, after that was fixed, it was replaced, Wednesday they came back, they tagged up all the outside of the park as well as on the ground. And then on Friday, they finished off with burning the, the toilet paper dispenser. I mean, these are, these are constant issues that our parks are facing. And many times why our, our parks end up looking the way they do, right? Because we're constantly trying to chase after and fix all these issues of vandalism that end up targeting our, our public spaces. And so not only, you know, multiple conversations with our different sports leagues that have been wanting this and have been asking for this level of, of, of safety and resources. And so I think this is something that we're delivering and we're very, very proud to deliver and it's really been under your leadership and, and the culture that you're creating in terms of, of bringing this to light. So I just want to thank you for that. That concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else with any, Mayor Pot?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do also want to highlight and thank, thank you, Chief, for going out and meeting with the community. So he, we asked him if he would go out there to meet with the users of the park, specifically the, the Montebello Baseball Association when these issues were happening and we were getting complaints, complaints, complaints from them. So he actually took the time to go out there and listen to the concerns and actually see what the issues were for himself and then came and helped implement the program that you see before you today. So thank you again for taking the community in mind and, and carrying this out.
Is there anybody else? Councilwoman Romero?
Yes, I'm, I'm excited about this launch of this new program, especially since I have two young boys myself. So it's definitely going to bring comfort to me when I know my kids are at the park. I do have a suggestion, potentially, I know in the past we've had coffee with the cop and maybe we could have something more geared towards the children to change the perception. I know you said sometimes you can, it can be off-putting if you see an officer at the park and you think it's a negative thing, but it isn't. It's a positive thing that you guys are there to protect us and to protect our children. So maybe you could have something geared towards the youth and you could meet with the youth and they could ask you questions or anything like that. That's just my suggestion.
No, ma'am. Thank you. It's a great suggestion and we're excited with the, the funding of the community center at Chet Holyfield Park. We have a series of events that will work with all of your schedules, everything from paletas with the cop to ban with the cop. And I'm a firm believer that we don't have to have grand events. Sometimes it's the smallest thing at the park that's going to bridge that gap and, and get kids to, to not be afraid of the police, especially in this time. It, it's vital that we have just grassroots events where it can be just something as simple as giving out a sticker, but it goes a very long way. So in conjunction with Chet Holyfield Park, you will see us do a lot more and, and share not only with both sides of the town, but with, with South Montebello, in particular some of the parks where there's leagues and activities and soccer, baseball, basketball. So you'll see a heavier presence and we're, we're thankful and excited for the community center and it'll be a, a game changer for us to, to really provide services and bridge that gap.
Councilwoman Rolson?
Yeah. Chief, thank you so much. I just want to share a quick anecdote. First, I think it's tremendous that we now have a Parks Bureau, obviously speaking as somebody who uses Chet Holyfield Park nights. So the anecdote was that just this week, there was a resident who shared a concern about tagging on the playground, which by the way, was taken care of tremendously fast by our staff here. But, you know, now having the Parks Bureau, I, I think that, that acts as more than just a deterrent, right? Could that as this means of actually giving some of these misguided views potentially, the ability to have some guidance from people and deter them from behaving in acts of vandalism. So I think that, I think it's great that we have them, obviously, all over the city, but I'm really proud and happy to know that now Chet Holyfield will also, by the way, Community Garden, now a Parks Bureau in, in the future, in the very near future, a police substation. Incredible. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to echo everything that my colleagues have stated. Thank you, Chief, for implementing this and for our whole police department. This is, you know, specifically to District Three, the Grant Ray Park area. I think the Mayor Potem kind of discussed that a little bit. We have seen because the park is next to the riverbed, there is a lot of transient activity that goes on there and having a strong presence in our parks is definitely, you know, going to make a big difference. So just want to commend you for the startup of this and, you know, it'll be great as we go to all the parks to see the strong presence there as well. So thank you. All right. We are done with the presentation portion of the council meeting. We'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the public may submit speaker cards to the city clerk. Staff for both agenda and non-agenda items prior to the beginning of this statement. Public hearing items do not require a speaker card. The city council will address non-agenda items during this section and speakers will be called in the order received. Those persons not accommodated during this thirty-minute period will have an opportunity to speak under public comments continued after all scheduled matters have been considered. Public hearing, regular business and/or consent calendar items will be addressed at the time that matter of business is heard in the order received. Please be aware that maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits the city council from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all your comments to the mayor and city council. Thank you.
First speaker is Fiona Remers, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening, council. My name is Fiona Remers. I'm the community library manager at Chet Hollowfield Park, I mean, Chet Hollowfield Library. Sorry. Just wanted to invite you and everyone to visit your local library this summer. We have so much to offer, everyone of all ages. You can read books and get prizes for reading all summer long. For kids, this includes an In-N-Out gift voucher, free books to keep and toys. And adults go into a weekly drawing for reading. We also have many programs going on both at Chet Hollowfield and at Montebello Library right here. At Chet Hollowfield, we have a magician, anything from a magician to month, Monday crafts to poetry writing for adults. And you can find lots of programs happening at Montebello Library as well. And finally, if you have a child who is, or who has attended grades one through six, they are, it's not too late to sign up for tutoring in math. up for tutoring in math and English. And you can find that information on our website. So if they need extra assistance in either subject, then the library is here for you. It's always a safe space for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker? Next speaker is Rosa Tamayo, followed by Alexandra Soto.
Buenas noches, Mayor Melendez, miembros del Consilio. Yo soy Rosa Tamayo. Como yo soy una India y aquí, y tengo el sentido alto de la justicia. Y muchas veces dicen, oh, ¿por qué es así esta señora? Pues por eso. Nosotros los yaquis tenemos esa cultura. Nomás quiero decirles que aquí en Montebello no hay viviendas accesibles en precio y también de una recámara. No hay para nuestros veteranos y para las personas con necesidades especiales, que ellos necesitan vivir independientes. Y la cosa es que yo estoy oyendo proyectos de que tienen, que valen bastante dinero. Quiero decirles que tengan mucha precaución en usar el dinero del agua, porque ese dinero es exactamente para emergencias que nosotros podemos tener. El otro problema es que el dinero del federal, mucho cuidado, porque yo tengo un ojo para ese dinero, para los dos, para mucho. El problema es que a veces ustedes piensan que hay millones y millones, y los puedo, puedo agarrar de aquí una parte, puedo agarrar. Tengan mucho cuidado, porque se vienen problemas financieros muy grandes. Y no hagan mal uso de los fondos, de los taxis, de las personas, de los residentes. Muchas veces se lo he dicho. Así que tengan mucho cuidado con el bache, porque nosotros tenemos un grupo que estamos trabajando en ello. Así que yo, como soy una India y aquí, he sido muy discriminada, pero la discriminación la vuelvo con educación. Y así empecé desde mil novecientos noventa y uno que yo llegué a esta ciudad. Miré los Cucus Clan que estaban sentados en la mesa de de directiva de la educación, y me tardé tres años en echarlos para fuera. Así que yo soy muy activa con los derechos civiles. Muchas gracias.
Gracias por su comentario. If we can please have the next speaker? Next speaker is Alexandra Soto, followed by David Viesas.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time. First and foremost, I just want to take a minute to thank you all for condemning the violent acts of ICE in our communities and condemning illegal and violent action conducted. So thank you all. I'm very pleased that you all can agree on that. Hello and good evening. My name is Alexandra Soto. I, along with my mother, Anna Soto, who has been cutting hair in this city for over forty years, are the owners of Hair Philosophy, located on the corner of Fifth Avenue and Whittier Boulevard in downtown Montebello. For a total of fifty years combined, my mother and I have dedicated to the Montebello community. We have donated time, products, and services to the Chamber, the city high schools, service organizations, and what was formerly known as Beverly Hospital, to name a few. We were one of the small businesses that brought you the very first Montebello Family Festival, along with Angry Horse Brewing, AGNS Printing, and other local businesses and community members. We love this community. And yet, we are being forced out for development in the downtown Montebello area. I'm not here to make a case for or against development. I am here to politely and publicly ask that you, city council, uphold companies like Caesar Chavez Foundation, to follow through on necessary due diligence and basic requirements when transitioning and developing projects. I am here to remind you of your duties to uphold these outside vendors and developers to do right by our local businesses and residents. Look, everybody was so excited for the JJ Vista grand opening last week, but right on the other side of that building, graffiti, trash, used needles, glass bottles are accumulating and creating an unsafe environment right on Fifth, right behind Hair Philosophy. You guys have ten proven business owners that are being cooperative and being forced out, and you guys can't even ensure the developers do right by us in this transition? Danny Koo was no saint, but he would send a gardener every two weeks to provide maintenance on the landscaping. It deterred criminal activity. Ever since CCF took over that property, they are completely negligent in basic needs of tenants. This makes us worry that if they aren't doing right by us now, how do we know that they're going to do right by us when it is time to relocate us and provide us our much owed benefits? Look, don't get me, don't get me wrong, okay? I appreciate the development. Sixth Street, Cross Street, beautiful, okay? But, you know, Top Golf, Tesla, I get it. Bigger businesses are appealing. But please do not forget about these small businesses and legacy businesses that have upheld and paid dues for decades. Please keep top of mind that due diligence, now more than ever, is incredibly necessary.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker? Next speaker is David Viesas, followed by Delia Delgado. So I believe Mr. Viesas left. We'll call the speaker after that. Okay, so next speaker will be Delia Delgado, followed by Raul Hurtado.
Good evening, Mayor Melendez, City Council, Chief Lopez, and Chief Palacios and staff. I am here, I was here about a month ago, two council meetings ago, speaking about the oversized trucks that are three hundred tons or more. And since that time, it's been open season. It's been crazy busy on Vale. I can only imagine the other residential streets going by daily, dozens of large, oversized trucks. We, they just traverse as though they were just, you know, meant to be there. We need enforcement. We need to have enforcement. I spoke to an officer the last time they were going to be doing something, but I've I've seen nothing. I see police officers following behind the trucks, not giving any citations. I don't understand. It's also very good to see paving the way project in effect. But when will Olympic Boulevard between Concourse and Vale get paved? It's terrible. You have to drive in the middle of the street between oncoming traffic to avoid all the dips and the ditches. It's terrible. It needs to be fixed. It was talked about for years off and on, but nothing has been done there. So please, keep that in mind. And once again, I want to commend our Parks and Recreation Director and his staff for their hard work and care for keeping our parks clean and kept. Can staff also maybe look into the possibility of a walking track around the city park? Many people jog there, walk there. I see a lot of families walking and riding their, their children on their bikes. It would be nice if the sidewalk was a little easier to walk on. And it's so hot, I'm really happy to see the concerts in the parks are back, where they belong. So thank you. Thank you for working on that and bringing those concerts back to City Park where they originated and where they should be. And it's real good to see Chief Lopez being creative on using the resources that you already have to implement and help with security in our parks and in our community. Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you for this time.
Thank you for your time. If we can please have the next speaker? Next speaker is Raul Hurtado, followed by Adriana Ford.
Good evening. I'd like to try and pick up where I left off at the last meeting, when I was so rudely interrupted by the city attorney falsely accusing me of calling names to the staff. And I was going to about to address the situation that City Councilwoman Tamayo said that she was promoting the fundraiser at the Pescador for the race from Baker to Las Vegas. She said the chief was going to run. Did that happen? False, you know, you need to get your facts together and present them as true statements. Perhaps she was talking about the past chief, you know? But he wasn't there either, so he didn't run. Anyway, what was I going to say here? I didn't prepare because I sometimes I feel like it falls on deaf ears. I will, I will say that he would, the chief was over in Las Vegas, capitalizing on Chief Espinoza's idea to bring that race back. He sat as a captain for maybe ten years. He could have instigated that a long time ago, thought out of the box. This idea that he's bringing up here, I think Chief Espinoza started it, capitalizing again. I am not going to talk about this at the next meeting, and then you're going to go dark in July. So I will come back and I will have public communications on items of community interest. And I will tell you exactly how the chief police got that job, because I think it's a community interest how he got that job. And then you'll find out why I use the word snake so much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker? Next speaker is Adriana Ford, followed by Tila Gregorian.
Hello, Mayor, everyone. So I shouldn't be here right now. I have nine severe food allergies. I work nine-hour days, but I'm here right now because no matter how hard I try to call the Congresswoman, to call Scarlett Peralta, to call and tact anyone in the area, I haven't been able to get a hold of anyone. I live off of Garfield Ave. I live across from Top Golf. And since I've been there, I've been there almost one year. And let me tell you, there's red light cameras that are five hundred dollar tickets. There's raggedy roads. There's consistently construction, but yet, we never know about it. Ms. Peralta noted earlier that we should have consistent community outreach so we know what's going on. I never know what's going on. Sometimes I leave to go to work and just my alleyway is blocked. Sometimes I'm going up the street and the freeway exit, can't get off the freeway. I have to go a whole nother two miles to get off the freeway. This doesn't make sense. I am probably one of two African-American people in my neighborhood, which means this meeting tonight should have been held also in Spanish. So I can't understand how you were able to have this whole meeting and not really translate anything. I'm also not able to understand, and while I do appreciate that you have noted that you don't like that ICE has done what they've done, I haven't heard any action plan on what the people here should do. You're inviting people out to a community event, but you're not telling people what they should do in case something happens. I had a very thriving community when I moved in, where I moved into, people were laughing, people were singing, everyone was saying hello to each other. And now everyone's in hiding. I'm a social worker for another county. So luckily for me, my neighbors do come to me and ask me for advice and I'm able to provide to them. But that should be something that's done by the community itself. When there's construction done, I should know. And I want to know if you wanted people to trust in the police. And I do believe that what I've heard tonight, I do believe that's true and that's real, that you do care. But it concerns me that I was in downtown LA last Friday and I saw police leading the ICE trucks. Twenty of them drove past me, speeding past me in downtown LA. So what I ask of you tonight is that when you go back and you confer, that you think about the residents that live in the town, and that you think about actually communicating with us, actually reaching out to us, coming to our community, and actually showing us what's going on. Because I tell you, looking on the website, trying to find any information, if it hadn't been for the lovely lady who answered the phone about a week or so ago, who told me about this meeting, I wouldn't even be here tonight. I wouldn't have known that it was happening. I really do enjoy this community and I want to stay a part of it and I want to be active in it. But I need to know that my council members, that my town, and that my mayor are also looking out for the people that are my neighbors, because toda la comunidad está mi gente. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker? Next speaker is Tila Gregorian, followed by Priscilla Gonzalez.
Good evening, council members, residents of Montebello. My name is Tila Gregorian. Address is on file. I would like to talk about the dog park. There seems to be an issue there. There are dogs fighting. I haven't gone to to check it out because someone just sent me a picture today. But do you have rules and regulations posted on that dog park? I think we just might need them. Because I have gone to other dogs, dog parks in other cities, and I've never seen any dogs fighting. So I think, and I don't even remember if I saw any rules and regulations. But I had a little Shih Tzu that used to control all the dogs. He was always in the, in the side of the bigger dogs. So he used to keep them in line very well. But I was just kind of shocked with this picture that I received. And I thought, maybe you need to post some rules and regulations. I do not think that a person that cannot control their dogs should take them to a dog park, because that it's open for the dogs of the community, not just one dog. Anyway, I also, oh, we're talking about trees also, because I hear that there's been some trees being cut down in our city. Well, I hope that when you cut trees down in the city, for everyone you cut down, you put, you plant two more. Because a few years back, there was some men that were going to plant trees across my, my street. I live in Los Amigos. And they would have been very nice to have had there. And for some reason, they got called off. And that's when you had like eight hundred trees to be planted in our city. So I never did find out what had happened. I got busy, busy with personal, my personal life, so I did not have time to follow up on that. But there are, there's a wonderful space there for trees. I would like to see more trees planted in our city, because trees are what filter the air we breathe. So more trees you plant, the better our air quality will be. So please, if at all, please think about that and give us more trees in our city. And don't forget, just because I live in the north side, doesn't mean that we don't need more trees there, too. I says, I would have, I would have, I wish I had followed up with that.
Thank you.
Tree planting.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker? Next speaker is Priscilla Gonzalez, followed by James Santana.
Hello, good evening, Montebello residents, Mayor, council members and staff. I am, well, let me introduce myself. My name is Priscilla Gonzalez. I've lived in Montebello now for five years. I want to thank you all in advance for letting me speak and for hopefully listening to what I have to say. This is my first time attending a council meeting in person. And I really felt the need to come in person today because I'm extremely concerned, as many of us have already voiced, with what's happening in our community, in our state, in our country. Now, I'm looking, I'm up here today because I'm looking for like-minded peers like myself to organize something, get together, and have something peaceful, family-oriented in our community on Saturday. I think we need to take a stand. You know, I'm not an activist. I'm not a political person. I'm not even a troublemaker, although my husband might say I am. I am just a mom that wants my little four-year-old to know that we have the right to protest, to assemble, to be peaceful, and to stand up for everyone in our community. We need solidarity. I appreciate everyone taking the time to say how angry you feel. But let's take it a step further. Why don't we now encourage and move forward and set up something here at City Hall on Saturday morning? You know, everything in You know, everything in the media is all violence and rioting and looting. I'm a native Angelino. I know that the Dodgers win and things get crazy. I marched in 2006 with my high school to talk about immigration and protest. I think it's time that we all take a stand for it. You know, we're not just speaking for immigration. We are speaking up for justice for all in our country. And if we don't take a stand now, and if you all choose not to support me, because I will be out somewhere in the morning on Saturday with my sign and my four-year-old, if you guys choose not to support, then please know that you're not supporting the Constitution. You're not supporting our First Amendment right to assemble. And so I hope that after this meeting, I'm available online, social media, I'm gonna be out here asking for phone numbers for people like my wonderful neighbor who came up here, lives at the Topgolf. That's the community we need. We need to get together. We need to say something. We need to just hold hands and, you know, go through the grieving process of all of our neighbors going through this. So I really hope and encourage everyone, my neighbors especially, let's do something. Let's do something on Saturday. Thank you all. Mr. Police Chief as well, I appreciate your desire to get into the parks. I would love to have you go to my son's play school. He's three years old, about to be four, and he is afraid of cops. And the last time we got a sticker, it was the last one, so we need more stickers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is James Santana, followed by Yvette Fimbres.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. My name is James Santana with Montebello United. I hope that everyone's taking care of self and family and friends during this very chaotic time. I want to thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Alvarez, I know, shocker, and city administrators for the communication being sent out these last few days. It's really appreciated, and I hope to see more of it. I'd like to make a comment about the legitimacy of our governments and better discourse in our city. We are in and will be facing a cultural battle for legitimacy for these next couple of years and the very idea of who we are as Americans. Are those ripping families apart the values that we want to have? And are those in Montebello who call the seekers of transparency, accountability, and better governance rotten the values that we want to have? We need to talk about being better. We should be able to have better dialogue. We also need to talk about what better protesting looks like in our communities. I encourage my neighbors to fight for the values that we think Montebello and America has, is, and will be, and we really need to show up in these places and spaces where it matters. Let's critically think when the bots and the trolls are online trying to tell you what to do and how to do it. If someone is telling you who not to talk to because they're on another side, you really should question that person. You really should question those sides. We're all neighbors. We're all in Montebello. And right now, it's such a scary and exhausting time. We're probably seeing a lot of projection from our president and also some of these community leaders. I want to remind you, Mayor, and everyone to keep the faith, because it's gonna be a crazy ride these next couple of years. And I want to leave you with something that I read today, because it really hit home since I received a cease and desist when I started Montebello United, that I have yet to get a response from. Truth tellers get attacked for in toxic systems. Kindness threatens control. Empathy disrupts manipulation. And if you ever tried to be honest in a broken system, you're probably being scapegoated, because your light exposes what others want to keep hidden. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Yvette Fimbres, followed by Greg Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and cherished residents of Montebello. I am here tonight as second vice president of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 272 here in Montebello, and as a resident here in Montebello exercising my First Amendment right. Tonight, I stand before you with a mission, one rooted in compassion, understanding, and action. June is PTSD Awareness Month, a time to reflect on the invisible wounds carried by so many in our community. Whether they are veterans returning home, first responders serving our city, or survivors of trauma, these individuals navigate daily battles that often go unseen. Montebello has a proud history of honoring our heroes, of standing beside those who have sacrificed for others. Tonight, I ask that we take another bold step, a step toward visibility, awareness, and healing. I propose that we raise the PTSD teal line flag at City Hall, a powerful emblem of solidarity, reminding every person who walks through these doors that Montebello stands with them. I am willing to fundraise for the purchase of the flag to donate to the city if funding is an issue. But we must go beyond symbols. Next June, let us lace up our running shoes and host a 5K PTSD Awareness Run, a citywide event where families, friends, and neighbors can run or walk in honor of those affected by PTSD. This event will not only raise funds for mental health resources, but will foster education, conversation, and collective healing. Montebello is more than a city. It's a community of family. By taking these steps, we send an undeniable message: Nobody fights alone. Your struggles are seen. We stand with you. Let us make the vision a reality. Let Montebello be a trailblazer in our state and nation to recognize and expand awareness and education of PTSD. Let us create a Montebello where awareness leads to action and action leads to hope. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If we can please have the next speaker.
Next speaker is Greg Gonzalez.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Melendez, at all. Thank you for the time. I applaud my fellow citizens on their activism and their willingness to come forward. I especially commend the announcement regarding libraries and the comments regarding ICE and the crisis they are causing unnecessarily. Forgive the obvious rhyme, but compliance is not defiance, and as all of you spoke so eloquently, we do need to defy these orders. I'm also asking for the same courage and leadership regarding a common theme of mine regarding sustainability. This is a crisis that is ongoing. This is a crisis that affects us all. And it's nice to see lots of reusable water bottles here. It's disappointing to see all the plastic bottles on those desks, which we have spoken of before. In the middle of this meeting, or just before I came up here, I hit send on an email regarding an ordinance on the reduction of plastic and sustainability. According to a search on AI and the internet, about six cities in LA County have plastic reduction and sustainability ordinances. Our city can be a leader in this area, and we can be a leader in environmental justice, and our city suffers more from environmental injustice than our neighbors. As the crisis in our nation regarding other matters surrounds us, this is a matter that we can take a small step. Example, 50 years ago, there were 56 days of 90 degrees plus in our city. That was 50 years ago. Today, we expect 67 days of 90 degrees or more in our city. By 2050, we could expect about 90 days of 90 degrees or more. We can take a big step in our city and a small step globally by enacting an ordinance that would address this crisis. As we look in the current environment of raids and environmental injustice, a lack of trees, a lack of tree canopy, this is a small step we can take before our city burns up. Thank you for the time. I look forward to a response.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have another speaker?
No, Mayor. That does conclude all speaker cards for non-agenda items.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We do have, we'll go into item number eight, the residential solid waste collection and recycling charges annual rate adjustment, and I believe we have a speaker and a presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, giving the presentation is Jeff Cameron, who's our consultant on environmental waste items.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. What we have before you Let's try this again. There we go. In May of 2024, the City Council released RFP number 2400. This was a result of the end, or basically the sun setting, of an existing residential franchise for solid waste and recycling services. In working with the city, city staff and council were very adamant about what should be included in there, and proposals were submitted to the city. It was a public bid for all of the 13, then 13 licensed haulers in the city, which were allowed to provide services. We did receive three bids from those. These were sealed competitive bids. And as a result of an independent analysis on those, it was presented to City Council on October 3, and it was awarded to Eric Halian Enterprises Incorporated, which is Athens Services. They also were the lowest bidder on the RFP. This resulted in Agreement 4279, which commenced on February 11 of this year, when the other one expired, when their previous agreement had expired. And for the first time in this agreement, in all the years of the city, this actually includes a 16% franchise fee, which then is paid to the city in the form as part of the general fund. As part of the background with this RFP and under the new agreement, it actually takes, incorporates a lot of environmental aspects, including a mandatory 75% reduction and diversion program. So that means that of everything that they have, they are now, the residential franchise is now coming up to date in the same standards as the commercial franchises and requires 75% diversion, as well as a state-mandated organics program. So as part of this program, compliance with state regulations and state laws, so now the organics program, your green barrels that you have, now food waste and food scraps and food-soiled paper can now go into those bins as part of increasing the diversion and meeting that 75% diversion. The other thing that was unique about this, is really not unique, but in compliance with state law, is we established a three-card system, which was not available before. It was previously a two-card system. It went to a three-card system, with black being for trash, green being for food scraps and food-soiled paper, and a blue new card for commingled recyclables. That's where everything was going in, separate collection vehicles for there, so that that can actually increase the diversion and help get that material out of the waste stream. It also required AQMD-compliant vehicles, so that all of the vehicles servicing Montebello are actually compliant with AQMD standards. It provided for increased bulky item collection, working with city staff to pick up those items that are in alleyways and left on the streets or abandoned in some of the areas, so that this way, it's working in partnership with city staff to make sure that those are cleaned up and that they're addressed on a regular basis. It also provided for free city mulch. So rather than the city's part of a procurement requirement, it actually allows that same food waste and the organics that are collected in Montebello to actually be returned to the city in the form of mulch that will be free for city parks and any city-owned facilities. And it also provides for two free mulch, residential mulch events per year, which will establish, and those will be publicized, where residents can come in and pick up free mulch for their homes. The fiscal impacts of this under the bid was $43.94 per month for single-family residents. That was set forth in the agreement. That was approved by council. And the FY 2526 rate is actually set at $48.30. This part, when you see it in the resolution, the reason this is because it was a $4.36 differential between what the city had already previously put and collected. They can put it on the property tax one time per year. That had already been established. So because this agreement came into effect in February, there was a differential between February and June 30, of which the city did not collect the fees. This additional $4.36 actually accounts for that differential in rates, so that the city's made whole during that time. This is billed directly to the property tax, so all of the residential services and solid waste services are billed directly to the property tax, and the new rate becomes effective July 1. The recommendation, the recommended action would set the annual unit monthly rate for FY 2526 at $48.30, and that includes, again, the standard base rate of $43.94 plus the $4.36 uncollected differential that will be billed through the property tax.
Thank you for the presentation, noting that this is a public hearing. At this time, it is 9:06, and I will open it up to the public to see if there's anybody that would like to make a comment or has any questions on this item.
Good evening, Delia Delgado. Athens Services has grown tremendously. I have an issue with contacting Athens, and I think this should be addressed with Athens, is you get their customer service, you can't get a supervisor. They'll call you within 24 to 72 hours if you have a question. If they don't pick up your trash can, you can put it back and bring it back out the next week. This is an experience I had. The blue trash cans, the first week they came out, they didn't pick them up on the whole block, so I called to let them know that our trash cans are full. We're trying to get used to putting all our paper, waste, and plastics in the new blue trash can. They didn't know when they would be out. They would call me so that I can pull it out each day or whenever they were gonna be able to get somebody out, because they could not reach the truck to come back. Getting a supervisor is hard. I think with increases, I know the city did not implement this in the property tax, the $4.36, but with the increases, we need to know that we could contact Athens, because this is what the city website says, "Contact Athens." If we call, contact Athens. So if we have to do that, we have to know that we can reach someone that will get service immediately or right away, as soon as possible. So that's my problem or question or concerns with increases. With increases comes more expectation, so thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll work to reach out to you, Delia, and get you the appropriate contact in case of any questions, comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item?
Yo soy Rosa Tamayo y tengo 33 años viviendo en la ciudad de Montebello. Siempre estoy alerta en los trash de Atenas, porque donde yo he vivido siempre ellos nos han brindado buen servicio. Y también hablamos inmediatamente porque siempre tomo los teléfonos directos para hablar con las personas cuando los contenedores alguien los ha abusado poniendo llantas, poniendo basura de otros vecinos en los contenedores. Pero siempre yo siempre he tenido ese sentido, porque hemos tenido en nuestras vecindad personas que personas que tienen como vendedores de drogas, entonces vienen al trash y ahí ponen su, sus, lo que usan ellos. Entonces, yo siempre, yo les estoy hablando y les digo, ¿sabes qué? Aquí hay este problema, y sí, lo atienden inmediatamente. Y siempre tenemos esa confianza de estar hablando con los que conducen y transportan, los transportistas, son mis amigos y yo puedo hablar con ellos, y les digo, mira, pasa esto, pasa lo otro. Muchas gracias.
Gracias por su comentario. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes, Chila Groyan, again. I'm concerned, because they wanted us to separate the scraps from our regular trash. We already separate the recyclables and then, of course, the regular trash, but they never provided us with the container to put our scraps in. So I live near the hills, and I know the coyotes love to come and try to get into our trash cans. So I think if they expect us to separate the scraps, they need to provide the proper container, so that we can keep the coyotes and whatever else comes down to visit during trash collection day or before, and they need to provide that for us, with a lid that won't remain closed, and we'll be very happy to comply. But I still put my, I put them in a plastic bag, but I put them in my regular trash, because I have nowhere else to put them, and I am not going to provide that. I pay enough, and it's paid through my taxes, so, but it's still, it's, the prices keep on going up and up and up, and yet they expect us to, they expect to services less. So I have a problem with that. And I do, I'm very grateful, because as you can see, I don't walk all that well, so my trash are put in the front and to, on the curve from the side of my house, so I'm very grateful for that, that they have that service. So I want to thank them for doing that for me, but one time they forgot, and I called them, and they, they sent someone to pick it up. I says, "I can't keep trash around here." I says, "I live too close to the hills, we get coyotes and all kinds of little quitters that love to go and eat up of our trash." So they will, please provide us with a special trash can with a lid for our scraps, and I'll be very happy to be compliant. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Surtal.
Yeah, I do have a question on this, because I am a recycler, and I do believe in global warming and all that, and I, you know, I really believe that things could be used twice or recycled or whatever it is. And I am separating, I'm having a big fight with my tenants, because they don't think they should do it, but I'm winning. But my question is, what about the eateries, the restaurants, the hamburger stands and all that? They threw all, everything, the food scraps, the paper, everything in one container, and it's taken. Aren't they, don't they have to comply with this? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Tala. If the consultant, can you answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is part, and first of all, all commercial businesses are required to recycle under SB 1383. Every hauler of the 12 haulers that are now licensed in the city, they are required to provide organics recycling. There are some, the state does provide a waiver process for this, which is a de minimis waiver, which basically if you do not have enough room for a green organics process, or if you generate less than a certain amount, and the amounts are 10 and 20 gallons, depending on what your year is. But as of right now, all of the haulers have complied with it, the eateries and the establishments and the food programs, the restaurants, they are, all have their bins, we constantly go out auditing them, and they are providing those services. Additionally, as part of the city program, restaurants and food establishments can donate their services, working with Heart of Compassion and others, where they can go and arrange for that donation, so that it does get recycled and/or reused.
Thank you for that. Anybody else that would like to speak on the item? Okay, seeing none, I will be closing the public hearing at 9:15, and at this time, it will be brought back to the council level. Okay, to any of my colleagues, Councilor Peralta?
Yeah, first off, I just do want to thank all those that came forward in the public hearing to share their concerns or things that they liked about the service. I did want to go ahead and just touch on some of those items really quickly, in terms of just the customer service. I've never personally called, but I have used their app, or there is an online, online portal where I have been able to successfully set up appointments, or not appointments, but service, services for bulky item pickups and those types of issues. Although I will say that online portals aren't sometimes user-friendly when it comes to certain ages, so that's something that I hope we can communicate with Athens in terms of just the customer service concerns that folks have raised. In terms of the scraps and pill bins, hopefully we can have a conversation as well with Athens. I think that in other cities, they do provide, I know it's hard to provide this to all of residents, but they do provide giveaways. In the past, I've seen that they do giveaways for these types of bins, where folks can go ahead and throw out their scraps, which then they transfer into the green bins that we have. Being able to provide a giveaway similar to the, I think the, we're doing something with the water catch, the water barrels, something similar would be nice in terms of the equity of allocating a certain amount through, through the different districts. But I think that's a concern I also have in terms of if we are able to do some sort of initiative where we can get pill bins out for the community. But beyond that, thank you for answering some of the questions that were raised, and that does conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this item? No? Okay, just want to thank you for the presentation, again, thank you for all the public speakers on this item, and for answering all these questions. Thank you. We'll move on to item number...
Motion.
Can I get a motion to approve this item, please?
A motion to approve?
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Peralta.
A second.
We have a second by Mayor Protem, if I can please have a roll call.
Councilmember Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Councilmember Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
An aye, what aye. The item passes. We'll move on to item number nine, a presentation of status of vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts in accordance with Government Code Section 3502.3. And we do have a presentation by the Director of Human Resources, Ramon Figueroa.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, and members of the public. Assembly Bill 2561 was signed into law last fall and became effective January 1st, 2025. The assembly bill added Government Code Section 3502.3 to the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, commonly referred to as the MMBA, which governs public employer labor relations. It requires public agencies to hold a public hearing before the governing body each fiscal year and present information on vacancies, recruitment and retention efforts, and obstacles in the hiring process. Upon request of the employer organization, a public agency shall present certain additional information if the vacancy rate for full-time positions in a bargaining group is at least 20%. The information, if requested, includes the total number of job vacancies within the bargaining unit, the total number of applicants for vacant positions within the bargaining unit, the average number of days to complete the hiring process from when a position is posted, and opportunities to improve compensation and other working conditions. The law also provides for employee organizations to have the opportunity to make a presentation at the public hearing. The city's bargaining groups were notified in advance of the public hearing, and I've been informed by a couple of our labor partners that they intend to present this evening. The city of Montebello has 10 bargaining groups, that include safety bargaining groups that represent sworn police and fire classifications, and non-safety miscellaneous bargaining groups that represent various classifications throughout the city. There's also an employee group of unrepresented full-time classifications. The chart on the screen shows the vacancy rate for the city's employee groups as of April 28th, 2025. The citywide vacancy rate across all employee groups is 15.4%. The safety groups have vacancy rates that are less than 20%, and there are four groups with vacancy rates above 20%. As you can see, there are several acronyms listed on the screen, but, so MCA, which is the Montebello City Employees Association, MSA, which is the Montebello Supervisors Association, SMART TD, the International Association of Sheet, Metal, Air, Rail, and Transportation Workers Transportation Division, and MMPA, which is the Montebello Management Professionals Association. Of those four groups, MMPA, which is represented by APSME, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, requested that additional information be included as part of the presentation. So this slide includes the information that is required to be presented as part of the public hearing, as requested by MMPA. The total number of job vacancies in MMPA as of April 28th, 2025 is 13. Total number of applicants for vacant positions in MMPA for fiscal year 2425 is 681. The average number of days to complete the hiring process from when a position is posted for fiscal year 202425 is 71. There's also a requirement to discuss opportunities to improve compensation and other working conditions. The city has seven bargaining units with labor agreements known as Memoranda of Understanding, or MOUs, that are expiring on June 30th, 2025. The MOU is the agreement between the parties for a specified term that addresses wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. The city is currently engaged in negotiations with MMPA and five other bargaining units for successor MOUs. The city anticipates that the opportunity to improve compensation and other working conditions will be addressed through the negotiations process. I'm pleased to report that the city recently reached a tentative agreement with SMART TD. SMART TD members have ratified the agreement, and staff intends to bring the item to the city council for consideration at the next council meeting. This is a snapshot of some of the work we have been doing. In calendar year 2024, human resources staff processed 103 recruitment citywide. There are 121 full-time new hires and 37 promotions to full-time positions. The human resources team strives to collaborate with hiring managers to recruit and select employees as quickly as possible. There are currently no obstacles in the hiring process, such as a hiring freeze. There are, however, some hiring process challenges that may cause delays in the hiring process. Some examples are the extensive background processes that are required for police and fire department applicants. In the transportation department, all applicants who are being hired for safety-sensitive classifications are required to go through a U.S. Department of Transportation background check. Finally, there are instances when the city receives a delay notification from the Department of Justice due to an applicant's criminal background. The length of those delays vary for various reasons. The city has various recruitment initiatives in place to attract qualified applicants. There are hiring bonuses of $2,000 and $10,000 for bus operators and lateral police officers, respectively, that the city council has previously approved. All city employees are notified of employment opportunities as they become available. Human Resources uses NeoGov, an online applicant management program, to efficiently and effectively screen applications, schedule interviews, and communicate with applicants. All open positions are posted on governmentjobs.com, which is where a large number of public agencies post their job openings. Staff has leveraged LinkedIn to market job openings and attract applicants. The city has hosted and attended various job fairs in the area. Human Resources partners with the Public Affairs Division to market career opportunities through the city's social media and community events. The city has a training program for hard-to-fill positions, such as equipment mechanics in the transportation department. Finally, hiring managers are trained on how to navigate the recruitment and selection process. Employee retention is a priority for the city and its labor partners. Listed are some examples of employee retention strategies to foster a positive, productive, and productive work environment. The city offers a tuition reimbursement program to support employees' educational and professional development, professional training and development opportunities with specialized organizations, opportunities for internal promotions and career path planning, recognizing employee contributions through employee appreciation events, enhancing employee wellness programs, enhancing compensation, and other terms and conditions of employment through collective bargaining, as previously mentioned. And a goal moving forward is the development of in-house employee professional development training programs. This presentation provided an overview of the city Montebello's workforce, vacancy trends, and recruitment and retention strategies. The city recognizes the urgency of addressing staffing vacancies to maintain the high quality and continuity of public services. I'd like to take a moment to thank our human resources team for all their efforts in partnering with the hiring managers to facilitate the recruitment and selection process. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, noting that this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 9:26. If there's any members on the public that would like to speak on this item. We have...
Good evening, thank you for that presentation. I wanted to come up here and speak for some of the messages that we get from Montebello United. A lot of members are messaging us, talking about what they see as nepotism happening in a lot of this process. So I hope that the strategy also includes some sort of leeway, or some sort of guidance, or some sort of recommendations about family and friends getting hired, and the promotion process and whatnot. So I really am up here just speaking for the multiple messages that I get. I think a lot of people don't realize that we have our own police, we have our own fire, we have our own transportation, and then to top it off, we have our own school district. So naturally, if you grow up in this community, you probably do want to participate and be involved, but a lot of the messages are that a lot of the staff that works in these areas are feeling this nepotism and favoritism that happens in this process. So I'm glad to see many people apply, but I think that there should be some sort of ordinance or guidance around this process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Mayor, sorry.
There's two presentations.
So we do have AFS CME on behalf of MMPA. We have a representative here in the audience.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Luis Schmidt, I'm with APSME, District Council 36, and I proudly represent the men and women that make up MMPA. APSME just came to the city just earlier this year, but I want to give the council, Mayor, I think a couple weeks ago, you attended a similar hearing at a different public agency, where we complimented that agency on what they were doing, and that is, that agency's taken a lot of progressive steps to go in the right direction. So again, with me today is the two, the two leaders from, one of the two leaders from our groups. I have our vice president, Lamisia Butler, to my, to my left, not Butler, Lamisia, Lamisia, yes, and then to my right, I have James Corneille, the president of the unit. So I want to give some background on this, on this legislation. This is a bill that we sponsored last year. So APSME was, you know, we're very politically involved, and we went to Sacramento to get this bill, to get this bill passed. And the reason it was important for us to get this bill passed is because we saw some public agencies throughout the, throughout California that were intentionally not hiring, intentionally keeping vacancies open, and then as a result of that, you have expensive contractors that get brought in, who give you a low rate to when they get in the door, and then ultimately it costs the taxpayers more money, and so, not that that's happening here. And so not that that's happening here, but this is why we had this, that this legislation passed last year in Sacramento. And I want to thank Ramon, you know, you did a great job of presenting what this legislation's about, so I won't repeat a lot of the comments that he already made. And Ramon, you did cover the vacancy rate, and I want to point out the vacancy rate for this group is twenty-eight percent. Now, that's only for year two thousand and twenty-five. We don't know what the rate was in two thousand and twenty-four, but I think part of the, what's important in this legislation is trying to figure out what steps are we going to take to make the city more competitive, more attractive, so that we don't lose and you don't lose talent. And so, Ramon, you did state that we are taking some steps in negotiations, but when I looked at the incentives that were being, that were displayed, those don't really impact this bargaining unit. This bargaining unit is your professionals that run your departments, that run and execute your vision of the the city manager and the city council. And so in negotiations, we did propose different items that would address, you know, the, what we feel is the lagging. This, this group has a disadvantage, a competitive disadvantage with other agencies. And so what we're hoping for is that the council give the city manager the support that it needs and the resources that it needs to address some of these, some of the, the competitive disadvantage that this unit currently has. Again, I'm not going to repeat most of the information. You know, the one on the screen is the one that specifically for this bargaining unit, the classifications, and as you can see, these are professional classifications that touch all levels of the city in many different departments. We talked about trying to attract and retain employees. These are not, these are exempt employees, so they're not subject to hourly wages, you know, that to overtime, but most of these, some of these professionals do get called out at all hours of the night. Some of these professionals, you guys depend on directly to be with you at many public events, and what we're hoping for is to be able to come up with different ideas through collaboration where we can address the needs so that, again, we keep staff, because when you lose staff, it costs the city more money, it costs the taxpayers more money. And then the chart that I have on the screen is just one, one visual that I want to share with you. This is the Public Information Officer, and I know it's small for our audience to see, but this is a list of many other agencies public, you know, that are close to here, population some more, some less, but this is just one example of the competitive disadvantage that that exists here in Montebello in one of our classifications. And as you can see, the, you know, the Public Information Officer from city of here, Montebello, from seventy-two thousand up to ninety-one thousand and change. And if you look at it compared to the other ones, it's, it's, this is the second lowest in this, within this group. As I walked in here, I saw the, I saw the, I could ask for just a few more seconds, I'll wrap it up, Mayor, thank you. I saw the posting for the police officer on the, on the screen out there. The reason you have those lower turnover rates and vacancies in those groups is because they're very competitive, and I think and I commend the council for taking that action to keep those groups competitive. But let's not forget about all the other groups that we can take opportunities to do, to do different things so that we can retain and attract good employees and great employees. And again, we're here to partner with you, we want to work with you, and again, these are professionals that execute your vision and your goals, and we're looking forward to a long relationship with the city of Montebello. And again, thank you for HR for working with us. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city manager and members of the city council.
Thank you for the presentation. We still have the public hearing open. I would like to, if there's anybody that would like to speak on this item.
Mayor, we do have another speaker, Zachary Humber with the Montebello Fire Association.
Thank you. Mayor Melendez, Mayor Protem Tamayo, members of the city council, want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Zachary Humber. I'm, I represent the sixty-four members of the Montebello Firefighters Association, many who were in attendance today, but duty calls, they just got a call as we speak. I want to commend them for hanging out this long. It was a long day for them. They had plenty of training today and a lot of emergencies in the city. I was invited by the city to speak on behalf of the success of Assembly Bill Twenty-Five Sixty-One regarding the vacancy rate. Initially, I was going to decline the offer due to the low vacancy rate in the Montebello Fire Department of just seven percent. However, I was doing a little reflection of where we're at now and where we were not that long ago. Just a few years ago, we were, we were at critical low numbers in the city of Montebello's Fire Department. We had a high turnover rate. Just in the last two decades, we left, lost eighty members to other agencies. Most recently, since the last contract signing, we lost twenty-two. It's, it dropped morale, it really impacted the department. It was at an all-time low due to that high turnover rate. However, though, there was a vision that came here. The culture shifted, things turned around, opportunity came to the Montebello Fire Department. I'm proud to say now we are at that seven percent vacancy rate. We implemented thanks to the fire chief and the support of the council, city manager, two new medic squads in the city. We've got a third on the way, serving the community. As you see right now, the firefighters got up and left when there was a bell to ring. We're currently today, for the past three weeks and today, we're doing hazardous material training, specialized training that, that's about six weeks of training. We normally rely on the city of Glendale and Burbank for hazardous material responses in the south. There's a lot of them, so pretty soon we'll be getting our own hazardous materials specialized unit. We're forming and reestablishing our urban search and rescue team. We recently was able to showcase that on the Eaton and the Pelisades Fire, and a search dog is getting reintroduced to the Montebello Fire Department. His handler is here, but he, he got a call. Exciting stuff with that new canine coming. The Wildland Division is back online. We're absent for about five years, so we're participating back in the master mutual aid, not only going out on the strike teams, most recently the Pelisades Fire, but also the overhead positions. We have a qualified safety officers, strike team leaders, where we lead other cities on these deployments, and even a helicopter crew members. We've got three of them here within the Montebello Fire Department. This transformation is what brought our vacancy rate down to seven percent. It wasn't by chance. It was through the vision, the leadership, the opportunities, and the culture change of the Montebello Fire Department. I want to thank first and foremost the community who supports us. When we go shopping, when we're at the gym, they come up to us, they thank us for their service, and it truly means a lot when we have that. I also want to give a huge thanks to the sixty-four professional firefighters that dedicated their time to this agency. There's a lot of departments trying to attract them, lateral, lateral offers, bonuses, but they appreciate the opportunity and they're sticking around. I want to thank Fire Chief Palais, he's the one who had the vision, and we brought it to the reality. Acting City Manager, Helica Palmeros, she was our deputy director, very impactful, fully support her full-time appointment to Assistant City Manager. And thanks to the city manager, Raul Alvarez. Since you came on board, things turned around for us. We grew. That seven percent vacancy rate is now possible thanks to your support and help. City Council, you're always there when I call, we talk a lot, thank you so much for However, the seven percent is progress, but it's not a solution. Currently, right now, the Montebello firefighters are ranked ninth out of nine surrounding agencies in total compensation. Their pay that they're getting now, it does not represent nearly their professionalism and the performance that they offer to this great community. It is so imperative, the need of a competitive contract that matches their professionalism and risk. Like I mentioned earlier, there are cities right now that are offering, a few more minutes, Mayor, cities right now that are offering hiring bonuses for laterals. And what a lateral is, it's somebody who comes here to Montebello, gets three years of experience, and goes on as a lateral, and they offer them these bonuses with substantially higher bonuses. I'm very confident in the city that we're going to negotiate a fair, equitable contract that represents the professionalism that the Montebello firefighters bring, and I am confident, once we do, we'll bring that seven percent vacancy rate down to zero so it can continue serving this great community in Montebello. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, for your comments. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seen none, we'll close the public hearing at nine forty, and it will come to the council level, looking around to see if any of my colleagues have any questions, comments. Counselor Peralta.
I'll keep it short, I know it's a long, long night here. I just do want to thank both, both groups that did come up to speak on behalf of their members. It's always really important to have your presence to understand the issues as well as the successes that your departments are facing, and so I appreciate that open communication. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? No? Seen none. At this time, I just want to thank all the presenters and for this very important assembly bill as well. I think it shows the transparency in our local government, so for all those who fought for this bill, just want to commend you and, and thank you for that. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
Motion to approve.
We have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I second.
Second by the Mayor Protem. If I can please have a roll call.
Counselor Romero.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Aye.
Counselor Peralta.
Aye.
Counselor Alonso.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
And I vote aye. Okay, we'll move on to item number ten. I'll pass it on to the city manager.
Yes, Mayor, this is adoption of fire hazard severity zones pursuant to government code section five-one-one-seven-eight. This council member, at the last meeting, we gave a very lengthy presentation in the interest of time and not, and redundancy of not sharing the same information. We're not going to give a presentation, we're open to address any, any concerns, but if council will remember, as part of the presentation and the compliance with this new state regulation, we are required to pass an ordinance enacting the state procedures that we got to follow. So this is the first reading of that ordinance. You, we're happy to answer any questions, otherwise, open up the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, it is a public hearing, so it's nine forty-two. I'll open the public hearing to see if there's anybody that would like to speak on this item. Okay, seen none. It is nine forty-three, closing the public hearing. At this point, it's at the council level to see if anybody has any questions, comments. Counselor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. I just do have a quick question. First of all, I appreciate all the work that you all, our fire department, our city has been doing in terms of door knocking and informing residents of the fire safety zone in District One, and I know Mayor Protem Tamayo has been, has been out there in this effort as well. I know it's directly related, not in this item, but I know that the city, through congressional appropriations, is currently in the process, and obviously, we haven't gotten any information in terms of some potential funding that would directly, I would say, benefit the situation in terms of the fire hazard in that area. Would you be able, Mr. City Manager, to share a little bit about that project? I know it's still in the application, you know, phase, but in terms of potentially funding the wildland, I think it's like a fire station in District One within this safety zone.
Yes, Mayor, Council.
Would you just be able to share a little bit about that?
I'll share what I can publicly. One of the deficiencies that we've identified as a city is the fact that we don't have a fire station in northern part of Montebello. But last week, or as part of the efforts and the presentations, we've done three community meetings as a result of these fire hazard maps that were, that were presented by the state of California, and those fire hazard maps, and again, just recapping what the presentation was last week, the areas that were really designated as potential areas of danger were basically our, our Montebello Hills areas where the Teslas at, the malls at, those developments, the new housing development that was built by, by Toll Brothers, those twelve-hundred new units that are going to be built. All those communities on the hilly side and the preserve are considered high fire risk designation areas. And then also, you know, just touching a little bit on what the Police Works Director mentioned a little earlier, talking about the Lincoln Project, other deficiencies that we have identified in that area is the fact that there is no direct water access, there's no fire hydrants. So one of the initiatives that the city is undertaking right now is we're still in the process of identifying what potentially could be the land that we can acquire, but but we are hoping that we can build a fire station in the northern part of Montebello. Right now, again, share what I can, we do have a very, at least, it looks good for potentially a congressional grant that would fund this fire station. So it's still an ongoing process, right? Keeping our fingers crossed. Actually, and myself, staff, council, we are in July, you know, although we're going to be going silent, we are going to be spending time in Washington, D.C., actually, presenting this project, requesting this funding, meeting with our legislators and those folks that make those important decisions to, hopefully, when we return sometime this year, we can deliver some good news and, and that we have a fire station in northern part of Montebello. So.
Thank you.
We'll report back as we come back from the future.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you for sharing that information. It's something that's extremely critical, is we've now identified this area as being a hazard in our community, and it's been, I think, in general, we've always just gotten a lot of concern and complaints about it. So appreciate the due diligence in terms of congressional, seeking congressional appropriations for this. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Mayor Protem.
Yes, so my comment is, you know, again, a lot of this impacts the District One area up by the hills. I know we were out there with the firemen and walking that area to let the residents know what all this means for us. This is information that's coming down from the state, but it is for the city to implement it. But just for information, there is on the Montebello website where you can go into these fire hazard severity zones, and you can, it's an interactive map, which I've done, you can put in your address and you can see where you fall, again, in these areas and what that means. So there's different levels, there's a moderate, high, and very high. And we have, you know, a little bit of those, again, up in the hills, so I encourage you residents, District One, up by the hills, you know, to use that so you know what, what this means, and it has an explanation. But any questions, you know, feel free to reach out, and we can help maneuver through this process.
Okay, thank you for that. If I see nobody else with any questions or comments, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Alonso.
I second.
Second by Councilmember Romero. If I can please have a roll call.
Counselor Romero.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Aye.
Counselor Peralta.
Aye.
Counselor Alonso.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
And I vote aye. That item carries. Before we go into item number eleven, I will turn it over to the Mayor Protem.
Yes, so I have a conflict, conflict of interest, of interest for number eleven, item number eleven. This is for the streets that are to be paved in our city, so I will step out.
Okay, sounds good, Mayor Protem. We'll call you back in after we discuss this item and take action. And then I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Yes, Mayors, council members. Item number eleven is adopt resolution twenty-five dash forty-three approving the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six project list for Senate Bill One, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and twenty-seven, funded projects. In the interest of moving things along, it's almost ten P.M., and I will say that our staff has been working really, really hard this week, especially with all the things that have been happening in our community. I'm going to speak on this one very briefly. Let's be one, just as a recap, in my couple of years that we've been here, we've been trying to be more open and transparent in terms of our process, especially for a street paving program. We've done several presentations, and actually, I don't want to recover the same information, but in the CIP presentation that was given with Director. but in the CIP presentation that was given by Director Roldan, he actually did cover the list of streets that we're proposing to be paved for this upcoming year. SB 1, just so everybody, just for reference, it's a state law that passed that basically provides your taxpayer dollars for funding for all communities to have their streets paved, as part of the process where, as a city, we need to recommend all the streets that we want to pave within the budget, within the funding that we get. Just as an FYI, for everybody, these decisions are not made arbitrarily. We don't pick and choose streets because we like them. We actually make decisions based on data, and the data that we use is our pavement management plan. We also do it based on the cycle. Well, pavement management plan basically dictates the condition of the streets and when they need to be repaved. And in addition, we also use other factors in terms of when's the last time they were paved, and there's other conditions that we factor in. My point being that the streets that are in the staff report, the streets that were presented a little earlier by Director Roldan, are streets that we're recommending to the City Council for approval, that are actually within the top 10 worst-conditioned streets at this year that need to be repaved. So I'm happy to answer any questions for council that you may have.
Okay, I'll look around to see if my colleagues have any questions.
No question, first and foremost, thank you. I think we have an equitable approach now to resolving the issue that the entire house, every part of the city has streets that require repaving, but I think now the way that we're approaching it, by again, having an intelligent, equitable system where we select the worst streets is the way that it should have been done, and I'm glad that that is the way we're doing it now. And if you didn't hear me, read the list of streets that are underway to being repaved in the south, those are Tate, Greenwood, Spruce, oh man, I was reading those off the top of my head, and Carib. But yeah, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions, comments?
I have a quick question or comment, just as a reminder. I know we just repaved 33 segments, and I know we're going to be repaving the previous list that we approved this time last year. This specific list, what does that timeline, projected timeline look in terms of the work beginning or completing for this specific list?
So the idea is, once the list of streets is approved, our next step is to submit in the resolution, upload it to the state's website for their ultimate approval. Funding for SB 1, aka gas tax, trickles in throughout the year. We don't just get a lump sum right off the bat. And so we do have to wait a little bit for that money to come in, so that we can spend it appropriately. But we are looking to do a lot of this design in-house, so we could expedite the process, and then looking to probably get closer to the second quarter of our fiscal year, so we could start and hopefully end by the third quarter of next year.
So Counselmember, in that, we do ask the residents for your patience, you're seeing streets, and you're like, oh, cool, it's going to happen. It doesn't happen overnight, it's a process. We have to, the council action is, they approve the streets, we submit it to the state, the state signs off on this, we start getting money dispersed, and then we have to follow our process. As Director Roldan mentioned, what is a great thing, we are going to try to do the design in-house, that'll expedite that process, but then we need to come back for the actual bidding, the construction award, and then we can actually begin the construction. So it typically takes around nine to 12 months for us to get. So be patient with us around this time this year, knock on wood, you should have your streets paved.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that additional context. And in the interim of that project, I know we also have the list from last year that will start in the incoming months ahead. So I think in general, there's a lot of great work that's happening in the city, and just want to uplift Counselmember Alonso's comment in that this is the first time, really, that we actually receive a list of the top 10 streets per district in general throughout the city, to be able to make this assessment and really move forward in a way that is equitable for our community, and that we are addressing the streets that are most in need. Because I will say, I saw some of the streets that we've repaved in that 33 segment that we just recently did based off of previous years, and there were some streets there that even in my district that I thought were a little questionable in terms of knowing other streets that are now on this list really took priority. So I appreciate the opportunity of being able to assess the streets in terms of its condition and making that choice appropriately. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is there anybody else? If there's no other questions, comments, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I motion to approve.
So we have a first by Counselmember Alonso, and a second by Counselor Peralta. We can please have a roll call.
Counselor Member Romero?
Aye.
Counselor Member Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Member Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
That item carries 4-0. Before we're going to go on to the next item, if we can please get the Mayor Pro Tem. And for item number 12, City Manager, do we have a presentation for that as well?
No, Mayor, on this one, we're available to answer any questions that the council may have on this project.
Okay, we're discussing item number 12. At this point, it's open to the council, to see if there's any questions or comments. Okay, seeing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I make a motion to approve this item.
Okay, we have a first by Counselmember Romero.
I second.
And we have a second by Counselmember Alonso. If I can please have a roll call.
Counselor Member Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Tamayo?
Aye.
Counselor Member Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Member Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
All right, we'll move on to item number 13. I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, item number 13 is approve agreement number 4302 with the Sangria Valley Council of Governments, allowing the city to assume management and administration of the Operation State Safe Agreement with La Cada. Just briefly, again, want to move things along for us. This item pertains to our tiny homes community and the funding that we get from our county. And in essence, it doesn't impact the services, doesn't impact the funding. In essence, what we're doing is we're recapturing the oversight over the services in the agreement. So currently, or previously, as part of the structure, when the Sangria Valley COC worked with us on the tiny homes communities, they oversaw the process, they oversaw the management, they got the funding. So in essence, all we're doing here is transferring that over to us, which means that we're going to get the direct funds from the county for our homeless services, we're going to oversee the agreement, and then we'll have direct oversight over the services that are provided to the folks in our tiny homes community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll look around to see if anybody has any questions, comments on this item. Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I motion to approve.
We have a first by Counselmember Peralta. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselmember Alonso. If I can please have a roll call.
Counselor Member Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Tamayo?
Aye.
Counselor Member Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Member Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
All right, we'll move on to the Consent Calendar.
Okay, the Consent Calendar, all matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine. Any items a member wishes to discuss, including any items the public submitted speaker cards for, should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. Such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. So we'll go down the list and see if any members of the council would like to pull any items, starting with Counselmember Romero. Mayor Pro Tem Tamayo?
No items.
Counselor Member Peralta?
None.
Counselor Member Alonso?
No items.
And Mayor Melendez?
No items.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve all items on the Consent Calendar.
I motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear for the record, and the City Manager said this at the beginning, that item 22 is going to be tabled.
Yeah, all items, with the exception of item 22, that will be brought back in the future. So for the record, that's what they're pulling.
Oh, just, that's fine with that motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a first by Counselmember Alonso.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselmember Peralta. If I can please have a roll call.
Counselor Member Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Tamayo?
Aye.
Counselor Member Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Member Alonso?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye.
Okay, the Consent Calendar is approved, with the exception of item number 22, that's going to be, that got pulled. We'll move on to AB 1234, travel reports. Do any of my colleagues have anything to report?
No.
Okay. At this time, we'll move on to council orals, and I see a council oral for Councilmember Rick Alonso. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk briefly about pride. Pride is not just a celebration, it's a test, it's a test of values, or courage, and of whether our democracy lives up to its promise or just recites it. This month, we don't just raise flags, we raise standards, because how we treat the most vulnerable will always matter more than how we flatter the most powerful. Pride is about dignity, it's about protection, it's about ensuring that every person, regardless of who they are or whom they love, can live without fear and without shame. Justice cannot be conditional. We do not get to support equality only when it's convenient, and we cannot claim to serve the people if we fall silent when some of those people are under attack. As Dr. Martin Luther King said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. That's not rhetoric, that's physics. If a child is bullied because they are queer, if a trans adult is denied care, if a neighbor is treated as a threat because they look or speak differently, this entire system weakens. So let me be clear about where I stand. I stand with the kid who stays quiet in class because he's afraid of he be himself. I stand with the trans adult exhausted from defending their existence. I stand with the family afraid of their name or their action might make them a target. I stand with the single mom working two jobs just to keep the lights on. I stand with the teacher who speaks, who spends their own money and their own time. I stand with our undocumented neighbors, brothers and sisters, who pay taxes but live in fear. I stand with the street vendors building a life in a system that wasn't built for them. I stand with the elder who never misses an election, even when the ballot never says their name right. I stand with the workers who show up every day and still get left behind. I stand with the night shift nurse, the janitor, the foster kid, the guy who got told they were too much, too brown, or too late. I stand with every person who has ever been told they are not enough by people who were never qualified to measure them. I do not stand because it is easy, I stand because it is necessary. Leadership isn't about watching the wind, it's about planting your feet, it's about refusing to wait until it's popular to do the right thing. It's about knowing that if you're not taking a risk, you're probably not making a difference. I wasn't appointed to play it safe, I was appointed to serve, and service means standing up, especially when it's hard, especially when it's loud, especially when the stakes are human lives. So this Pride Month and every month after, I will not shrink, I will not soften, and I will not step aside, because I didn't take this seat to sit down, I took this seat to stand up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Alonso. Before we adjourn the meeting, I'd just like to congratulate our city clerk, Chris Jimenez, for graduating. If, on behalf of, yeah, let's give him a round of applause. I know you spend many hours here with us, you do your civic duty very well, you have a full-time job, you go to school, you participate in a lot of activities, so we just want to congratulate you and wish you success on your academic career. I don't know if you just want to say a few things about, I'm putting you in the spot, but a few things about what you graduated in, what school in.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I do appreciate it, and appreciate the council for those sentiments. I did graduate with a degree in public administration, that really falls in line with a lot of the work that I do as an elected city clerk, and my full-time job involves working as a coordinator in Parks and Recreation, so that degree really enhances a lot of my skills, but also gives me the opportunities, resources, and more skills to continue serving my community as a city clerk. So I'm very honored to serve as a city clerk, and feeling really accomplished to finish that degree, so thank you so much, Mayor and council, for that.
We'll throw you a party in the next couple of weeks.
Mayor, I do want to adjourn in someone's memory this evening, if that's okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So this evening, I would like to, give me one moment, apologies, adjourn and really pay homage to one of our Montebello residents, Albert Fred Saradell. He was a 99-year-old World War II veteran, and I would actually like to read some words that were written on behalf of his daughter. "My father was a good man. Yes, he served our country and was very proud that he did. He was proud he knew the city of Montebello. He would always tell me what used to be where. He lived there most of his life. He and my mother, his wife of 72 years, both went to Montebello High School. My mother worked and retired from Greenwood Elementary. My father was a hard worker and a true gentleman. He was a man of respect for the average Joe and for authority. He greeted and spoke to everyone. He was 17 when he fought in World War II. He was a machine gunner. Imagine being 17 and having a machine gun put to your hand. He didn't speak much of the war, just that he was proud. I think he went out of his way to work hard, take care of his family, and be a true gentleman because of all that he went through. He'd say hello, he'd give his seat, even though he needed a walker. He was part of the greatest generation. If you didn't know him, then you truly missed out. But if he passed you on the street, I'm sure he greeted you with a smile and a hello. I know this isn't a biography, I just wanted you to know that at one time, at one point, a great father, husband, person made his home and resided in Montebello." I, myself, and some of my council colleagues, had the opportunity to actually meet Mr. Albert last year, when he and his daughter attended Veterans Day Memorial. This year, his daughter attended the Veterans Day Memorial again, had informed me that her father was hospitalized, but that he was hoping to really make it out to our Memorial Day event. Unfortunately, he continued to be hospitalized and recently passed away, I believe, June 1st. Luckily, though, we, the city, through the help of our city manager and our Parks and Director, we're actually able to help and assist his family in sponsoring a military banner that is now hanging on Whittier Boulevard for Mr. Albert. Although he was not able to physically see the banner, he was alive to be able to see a picture of it, and he was extremely, extremely proud to have his legacy continue on here in the city of Montebello that he deeply loved. And so I do want to thank staff for really working with the family and helping with that sponsorship. But I send my condolences to his wife, his daughter, and his family, and I would like to just take a moment of silence for his legacy.
Thank you, and we'll adjourn the meeting in his name. Okay, just thank everyone who joined us here and also online, thank you for the comments. This time, I'll adjourn the meeting at 10:08. Thank you.